Call order, the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 members in civic clerk, 12 members in the room present and voting.
Thank you very much. Now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Alder Stevens. Not quite. I'm going to shoot at the mics. Excuse the technical difficulties. Alder Stevens, go ahead.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Because of my own beliefs, I have once again chosen to tap the shoulder of a member of our own Green Bay Metro Fire Department. Chaplain Andrew Colins has been a part of the Green Bay Metro Fire Department family for six years. He is a vital part of the chaplain program. The fire department's chaplains are volunteer-based and help our fire members in many ways. As chap-- is it working? As chaplain, I feel it is very critical when it comes to assisting firefighters and their families when they are exposed to trauma, losses, challenges, and experiences that occur with life in general. Chaplain Colins is a licensed administrator with him, uh, licensed minister with him, Assembly of God, and is a local business owner within the city of Green Bay. I also would like to say, um, like to congratulate Chaplain Andrews because he recently took over as head chaplain for the fire department. At this time, I would like to welcome Chappa Colins to our March 7th common council.
Good evening. You can respond. Good evening.
Good evening.
I like it when you've responded. Well, thank you very much for asking me to do this, Mr. Mayor and Alders. It's an honor and a privilege. I appreciate that. Yes, as chaplain with the fire department, we get to serve those who serve you, and it is an incredible honor. So, tonight, as you start this meeting, would you join me with prayer? If you bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help those here today to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as these members make decisions that might affect the people of Green Bay and continue to remind us that what we do here today, all that is accomplished is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks so much for your service to the fire department and for being here.
All right, on to approval of the minutes. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the minutes from our February 7th meeting. That was seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. On to approval of the agenda. Alder Eck.
Okay, I have a couple of amendments that I'm requesting. One is if we could move Q up to, um, let's see, after J or...
Right after K.
K. And then, sorry, I gotta write my own notes here. And then, under L, can we, or, let's see, can we move L2 and M1 before L, I mean, yeah, L2, M1 before L1? Does that make sense? So it's before the closed session, so those two items.
Wait, say that again?
Um, L1, or, I'm sorry, L2 and M1 to be moved before L1.
Okay.
Right before the closed session. That way, there's talk, you know, everybody that wants to speak can speak before that.
All right, so the amendment is to move Q, L2, and M1 to immediately follow K1?
Correct. Yes.
And there was a second by Alder Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended. It was seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. We're now on to report by the mayor. But just, uh, bear with me, some technical issues tonight with the new panel. Just a few comments on, uh, on our security system here at City Hall. The security of our staff and members of the public is really what matters in this discussion, in my opinion. It was the sole consideration and reason for the enhanced security system installed here at City Hall. So let me be clear, the audio system was used exclusively to provide needed safety and security measures. It was installed with guidance from our PD, and it was done at a minimal cost to the taxpayer. That said, the city promptly complied with the court's order to immediately disable audio security here at City Hall. This action has eliminated any urgency on the part of our council. That being the case, I would encourage you all, as members of the council, to consider this ordinance and policy change with the thoughtful deliberation that it deserves. Now, people of good faith can have disagreements about how best to keep people safe here within our City Hall, but the debate before us tonight, as I think many recognize, has not been advanced in that way. Instead, it's been characterized by bad faith and dirty politics at every turn. To those who are interested in a discussion on the merits, it's worth noting the presence of similar security systems at other city facilities and around the state of Wisconsin, including our very own Brown County Sheriff's Department, as well as Manitowoc County Courthouse and city facilities in the cities of Oshkosh and Racine. So you have to ask yourself, then, why has the city of Green Bay been targeted by powerful political forces at the state level whose job it is to make laws and not to bring lawsuits? Might it have something to do with an election that's four weeks away? Perhaps it does. Regarding the specific security context here, a number of incidents prompted the addition of audio security at City Hall, and those incidents, what was said mattered. The Green Bay Press Gazette described the incident with its staff as a, quote, "verbal assault." Another involved a member of city staff who was targeted with aggressive and demeaning comments about their qualifications and their background. So regardless of the outcome of tonight's debate, I'll continue to focus on the safety and well-being of our staff and the public. Additional resources may be necessary to achieve these outcomes, which is why I'll be asking relevant committees to discuss additional funding for full-time security staffing at City Hall, as well as possible physical improvements. With that, we will move along to the rest of our agenda. Announcements. Alder Weary.
Thanks for that speech, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to compliment the UWGB women, the Phoenix. They made it to the championship game again under Coach Barthez. Unfortunately, they fell a little short, but, uh, they're a pride that we can be proud of here in Green Bay. Thanks.
Absolutely. It's a great squad. Alder Campbell.
I want to thank everybody for, uh, if you're donating. My earth, and of course, my wife's. You know, every year with through the city of Green Bay and the generosity that it, that it shows. Thank you.
I brought my time there, so appreciate that. Other comments from council, announcements? Alder Scannell?
Uh, yes, I just found out a few days ago about an employee retention credit. If you have a small business of five to 500 people, now is your chance. Until, you have 23 months to apply for a one-time $26,000 tax credit. The federal government's sitting on $250 billion to share out. So if you've got a small business from five to 500 people, look up employee retention credit, fill out that form, and good luck. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Alder. Any other comments from our council? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to our appointments.
Motion to approve.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to advance these reappointments. That was seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Those reappointments are made. Onto our public hearings. So resolution regarding vacation of an unimproved public right-of-way east of Crestwood Drive, south of West Mason Street. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this item? Anyone here who would like to speak to this item? Any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Clerk, let the record reflect, there are no members of the public who'd like to speak to item J1. Now on to ordinances, second reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Alder, how would you like to be recorded?
Um, no, that's okay. There's one. All right. One no vote. Uh, otherwise, all the rest in favor. So now we are on to Q, which is the report of the Plan Commission. Entertained a motion. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately. Alder Eck.
Uh, I would like to handle items one and two separately, please.
Two, any others? Seeing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and two. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve item one, seconded by Alder Stoyer. It was pulled by Alder Eck.
Uh, yes, I would like to make a motion to combine i--
Alder Eck makes a motion to combine items one and two into one item, that was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Alder Eck.
Um, I would also, oh, may I on? Okay. I would also like to make a motion to hold these two items until our next council meeting on March 21st to allow all stake--
Hold both these items over to our next council meeting. That was seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on that? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Broadly speaking, I have no problem if we want to give a little extra time to the parties to kind of talk a couple of things through. There's one maybe amendment that I would offer up. As many of you know, when we, we make these modifications to the PUD, it also requires an ordinance change, uh, which, of course, requires two successive readings. So in an effort to be sensitive to the development time schedule, as well as maybe what, uh, what needs to be accomplished through, through Alder Eck's, uh, uh, objective here, maybe we could also amend this. I would make the formal amendment, just to be sure it's included, uh, move to amend so that the, the next council agenda that's published reflects first and final reading, so that way no time is lost, but also time is bought.
Just, just on that real quickly, we, we don't actually need to have it reflected in the agenda. We can always--
Okay, well, I guess that's the request, then, just to have it--
Have it noticed that way?
Well, it's got to be published that way in order--
It does not.
--for us to take the action.
It does not.
That's what we've been told in the past.
Yeah, it, it does not.
So we've not gotten the right advice in the past?
No, I mean, the council always has the opportunity to advance an item on a first and final reading. I think if, if it's the intention of, of the administration to recommend that, then we would absolutely want to notice it, but council always has that ability. That's why it requires the additional threshold, the two-thirds vote.
Okay, I, I guess it's not what we've been told before, so that's, if that's what it is, then that's fine.
But it's, I mean, I, council doesn't really have, well, I guess I'd ask--
Yeah, I mean, let's get clarity on that because we've actually republished agendas in the past to ensure that that was done.
Right, no, I understand the point. I'm not sure if that's something that can be amended by our council, but Attorney Bungert?
If, if the question could be repeated, because I'm not sure I'm following--
Does it need to be published on the agenda as a first and final reading?
It doesn't need to be, because council by ordinance has the ability to take up any item that's on a first reading and take it up. I think in the past, the practice has been to categorize it that way on the agenda for additional notice, but the agenda doesn't, the public needs to be noticed of what things, what items council will be discussing, possibly taking action on.
Okay, so--
So it doesn't have to be.
Okay, and I appreciate that point.
I think we have in the past for additional clarification and for additional clarity, but it doesn't, doesn't need to be.
Okay, so I appreciate that point, however, I'm still going to make the amendment, and the reason I'm going to make the amendment is because if it's still just published as a first reading--
Mm-hmm.
Then it's possible that it gets delayed until the April council meeting. Does that make sense? Because, because if council says, "We're not going to do the first and final reading," now you have delayed the project another two weeks if the votes aren't there to do the first and final in the same meeting. So I'm still going to make that amendment.
Sure.
And I think that's a, a, a motion that's in order.
The only clarification I would add is that council still, even, even if you're adding it as for first and final reading, council will still have to do a vote to suspend--
Two-thirds.
--the rules to adopt it for a first reading at that meeting.
Yep, understood.
So that's still, it's not guaranteed and stone.
Yep.
Okay.
Alder Scannell?
So then for the second, is it still required for a three-quarters threshold vote?
Two-thirds.
Or two-thirds?
You suspend the rules by two-thirds--
Right.
--and then you vote to adopt by majority. So you're--
Oh, okay, that's what we're suspending the rules for.
You're suspending the rules to do two readings, you're adopting on one. Mm-hmm.
Right, and apologies for belaboring this, but I, I guess my question is whether or not council has the ability to, to amend the way the agenda is put together.
They can refer it to be categorized how they want to. It, it's the motion, but ultimately, it, it's, it's a distinction without a difference because ultimately, council still has to take--
Right.
--the vote to suspend the rules.
Okay. Sounds good. So we have that amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it.
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That, um, item has been approved as amended. Now we are on to item L2. Consideration of possible action on general ordinance 06-23, in ordinance amending section 2-108 Green Bay Municipal Code relating to powers of alderpersons. Is there a motion? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Discussion? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there are people here to, to talk tonight, whether--
Yeah, sorry.
I'll project.
Yeah, and then just, I kind of alluded to this, but we've got a new panel that I have to control with a mouse, and Dave and I are sort of both doing it at the same time. So Alder Weary, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to keep, uh, keep cognizant of the fact there are people here. Our ordinance states the council should have the management and control of city property. Why we need to add this line in. Thank you.
Attorney Bungert?
Sure. So the reason is, is because there are two applicable statutes and legal provisions that apply in interpreting what powers are, are afforded to council as a legislative body and what powers are afforded to, um, the mayor as the chief executive and a mayor council, um, city administration and city setup as Green Bay. So while, um, council has the authority over city property, finances, highways, so on and so forth, as it's laid out, um, powers are also delegated to, to the, to the mayor as the chief executive. The general definition of a chief executive is an executive who has management over the day-to-day operations and decision, decision-making authority with respect to those operations on a day-to-day basis in running the city. And so, security, um, security measures, security features, uh, the day-to-day operations of the building itself fall within the purview of the mayor. And since, um, council would like that particular authority to come back within its purview, this, uh, ordinance amendment is needed.
Okay, is that in, in writing in the ordinance? Because it, it is in writing, under alderperson powers clearly in writing. The council shall have the management, the management and control, management and control of city property.
Correct. And that's, that's with respect to, that's with respect to the, the legal title of the building, so, and any city property for that matter. So selling, leasing, buying, all those decision, um, decisions have to come before council. But as far as what the hours of operation are of buildings, um, the day-to-day management of the buildings, that doesn't come to council on a day-to-day basis. Simply, logistically, that, that wouldn't be feasible on a day-to-day basis to be able to have decisions be up to, um, the authority of council that meets twice a week, or twice a month, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I disagree, but that, that's fine.
That's fine.
You had a good explanation.
Sure.
I, I would make a motion to have this be the first and final reading. I know we need a two-thirds vote to suspend--
Sure. So this is, uh, at committee of the whole, it's, it's the introduction of the ordinance, so that would get, um, approved, and then it's listed at, on, on first reading. Council then would take that ordinance up, along with chapter four, uh, which I'll explain when we get to ordinances, and then those, the, the rules can be, um, suspended so that it can be adopted tonight.
Would we need that majority, that two-thirds vote later?
Two-thirds to suspend the rules, and then a major, a regular, simple majority to adopt. So this is, this isn't the adoption of the ordinance, this is the actual discussion of the ordinance for council, and then adoption is in the ordinance section towards the end of the meeting.
All right, understood. That's all the technical questions I have for now. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments or questions? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Bungert, I actually had the same question as Alder Weary. And so you, you said that in the ordinance, it says somewhere that the executive branch has authority over day-to-day decisions of the management of City Hall?
Correct, that the mayor is, in statutes, the mayor is designated as the chief executive of the city.
Okay, and, and the reason I, I'm asking, very much to, I guess in alignment with Alder Weary, is trying to, really for our purposes, understanding, is this ordinance amendment necessary versus a policy adoption?
Right. So in order to adopt a policy, council can adopt policies so long as it has the power vested in it to transact business with respect to the, the policy, the topic of the policy, right?
Yeah, and I think that's the confusing part--
Right.
Because again, I, I, when I read this, it looks to me like we do have that authority, and if you say you don't, I mean, I think this gets us there.
Right.
It's, to me, it seems like one of those things, like this is how you end up with a law that says you can't tie your camel up on Sundays, you know, on this particular street.
Right.
It's just a very oddly specific and precise statement within that particular ordinance.
Right. No, I, I understand that it, it looks awkward, um, and, and I think it's because the day-to-day operations tend to be vested with, with the chief executive. That doesn't mean that those particular powers or duties can't be parsed out and be brought, brought back under the umbrella of council, and this is what it's doing. It doesn't look pretty, but it's functionally doing what it is that council wishes to do.
Okay, thanks for the clarity.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions or comments? Alder Burnett?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Attorney Bungert, um, are you, oh, so I believe that this is a good idea. I think council should have the authority so that something like this never happens again in the future. Are you aware of any municipality, uh, in Wisconsin that has audio recordings at their City Hall?
Um, I haven't personally investigated any of those things, just from, um, research and, and information that I've, I've been privy to. My understanding is that there are other municipalities that do have video components as part of their security system.
Video components, but not necessarily--
No, not video, I'm sorry, audio components. Audio in, in addition to video.
Okay, um--
I misspoke.
Okay. Regarding the action later on, it, it's kind of relevant to the discussion now, this agenda item, that if the council does go forward with adopting this and has the authority and the audio devices shall remain off, uh, according to the media report that I saw from Judge Hammer's courtroom, the attorneys for the city, uh, stated that they're going to appeal Judge Hammer's decision, which would basically have the audio devices activated again if the appeal goes through. Is that an action that the city attorneys, in this case, the council, we have taken on? Would they be pursuing the action to appeal Judge Hammer's decision?
So to, to back it up a little bit, I'm not sure where that media report came from, because my understanding is that my office never made a statement like that, neither did our attorneys, so I'm, I'm not sure where that came from. There has been no statement issued with respect to any subsequent litigation, response, action, um, that's, that was contemplated, um, or, or determined by, by my office or by outside counsel.
Okay.
As I've alluded, we were going to provide a comprehensive litigation up, update in closed session. Our outside counsel has, has, um, is in attendance, um, and so we'll be able to discuss that further, but--
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments on this item? Alder Scannell?
Yeah, I, I oppose this item most vigorously, uh, and it is kind of wrapped up with another item, which, you know, it makes it a little, I almost wish you could take them both up at once here, uh, but I guess, uh, by addressing this, why I think it's bad and what I think is going on here, perhaps I'm addressing both, but, um, I, I am very reluctant as a council member to take on more responsibilities, uh, without thoroughly vetting this, for sure, and, uh, even so, I don't know why there's such a rush here to, to do this. So let me just go into the whole audio business, because that's what's driving this, uh, so I think I feel like I need to address that first. And when it comes to this audio business, it, it, from my seat, it looks like a lot of sound and fury signifying nothing. A, a, as far as I can tell, this whole thing is based on lies, dishonesty, and misleading information. Uh, and it starts, if we start with, go to the root of it, it starts with the 2020 election and a damn lie that it was stolen. Yeah, see, there we go. Uh, and that's a damn lie, that's not true. So, yeah, that, that, yeah, that's--
Alder Scannell, go ahead.
Because it's putting it in context. This is what's motivating it. The motivation starts there. So it starts with that, and what's the result from that? Lie about the 2020 election? Nationally, it starts out with January 6th. We have the insurrection--
Members of the public? Alder Scannell?
Nope, nope, but help me narrow it down. Won't take me long to narrow it down, but I want to put it in context. And the January 6th riot, instigated by the liar, resulted in the death of several people that day and the following days, as a result of the action of that day, 140 injured officers and 130 more who subsequently quit.
Wait of order.
Go ahead. Alder Eck, what's your point?
At my point, I don't think he's focusing on, on the, um, we're, we're discussing the adjustment to the ordinance, and I really don't think that what you're saying is pertaining to that.
Oh, that-- Well, Alder Scannell... What's driving this ordinance, the change of this ordinance, is the security equipment at City Hall. That's what's the driving vehicle behind this, that's the motivation. So that's what I'm addressing. And it starts out with the big lie at the national level, and I'm going to bring it on down to what happened within the state. Because of that lie, we had people certify themselves as false electors, which resulted in criminal investigations and civil suits. We had the Gableman fiasco, the bogus investigation. It was never investigation, he had his mind made up long before that the lie was true, and all his actions followed accordingly. He's now facing an ethics complaint for his voluminous and inappropriate behavior of his shambolic, dishonest, and destructive campaign that has cost the Wisconsin taxpayers $2.5 million. Now, how does this work out locally? How's this trickle-down? Yep, we're there. Well, the vigilantism that we saw at the national level is what we're seeing here. We've seen a rise in vigilantism since that lie about the election, and what we see locally is people tailing cars from polls delivering ballots to downtown, people intruding into secure spaces, they have no reason to be there, people inundating staff with open records requests and questions to the point I consider harassment, people making demands on staff to follow procedures that are inappropriate, their zeal to right a perceived wrong is only as great as their ignorance about how an election is run. And, perfectly even in order, what's out of order?
Alder Campbell, hold your comments.
I think everybody in the crowd...
Alder Scannell has the floor.
I call the point of order, yes.
Okay, what is your point of order?
I think everyone here, get to the local thing, you're finally here, but you're basing it off of what people from Washington DC came to Green Bay and created all this issue?
No, no, it's local people.
What's your point of order, Alder Campbell?
Point of order, it's just commentary, these are...
These are facts.
These are not facts.
They are facts.
Okay.
They are facts. Every one of these is a verifiable fact.
Alder's, Alder's.
No, I didn't say...
That is not a point of order. Alder Scannell, go ahead.
These are verifiable facts. I never said I...
I want to remind my fellows, so this is like we are in a meeting?
Alder Scannell, go ahead.
Yep. And we get to the reason for the audio, verbally accosting staff and public. And I'm going to refer to the three incidences in particular, the mayor touched on a couple of them already, that were filed by the city with the lawsuit against us. One, we had a city attorney that felt threatened, her personal safety was at risk. No city attorney should feel that way. A reporter, surrounded by a group, felt isolated, threatened, and verbally assaulted, to the point where now she's no longer working this beat. That's great behavior. And lastly, an elderly woman delivering an absentee ballot was so berated, she cried and had to be physically helped to her car, she was so shook in.
Point of order, if I could. What's your point of order, Alder?
Two of those occurred in rooms, not in the hallway, and the elderly woman was in her 40s.
That's irrelevant to Alder Scannell's argument.
I'm just saying, they did not take place in the hallway. If you're using that as a reason to put audio in the hallway...
Alder Weary, that's a debatable point, that's not a point of order.
It is a debatable point.
Yeah, so it's not a point of order. You've been here long enough to understand the difference.
Well, I made my point. Thank you for letting me make my point.
You can do that on your own time, you know.
I like to use yours.
I raise points of orders, I don't interrute, otherwise, yeah, okay. So, oh, so she was only 40 years old. Oh my God, that makes it better.
You said elderly.
Well, that's what it was written, I am following what was in reported...
Alder Weary, hold your comments.
Don't talk to me though.
Alder Scannell, go ahead.
I am quoting from what was filed at court.
And that's all.
Well, this is what is filed at court. You've got evidence to the contrary? Fine, for me, fine, it's not an elderly lady, I'll concede the point, she's 40 years old. She was so berated, she wept and had to be helped to her car. I don't care if she's 70, 40, or 20, what risk does it make? So the result of this is, after the 2020 election, we now have a police presence during the election. We never had that before, we never needed that, we got it now. We've had to beef up security, we've had, we now lock our doors. We never had to do that before. People just wander in, they think they can do what they want. That vigilantism. And we've had to install security, and security, not only video but audio, because a lot of this is verbal, and you need the verbal evidence. Otherwise, it's a he said, she said. So now let's look at what we know, what's publicly known about the lawsuit. That's based on a damn lie. It says, it refers to that, the city spying, we're recording private conversations. That's what's very misleading information. Everybody could get, I even got sucked into that a little bit. The ACLU, that's how it was asked of them. What do you think of a city recording private conversations? Well, of course they were against that. I'm against it too. That's not happening. That's a lie. We are not recording private conversations. Okay. What we're recording...
I think we're at five minutes.
With all the interruptions I've had, I think I'd get a little longer.
I would agree. Alder Scannell, go ahead.
Well, then remember that when the rest of us speak.
I won't be interrupting you, so you won't have to worry about it. What we record is loud conversations in a public hallway in a public building. If you want to have a private conversation, go ahead, go out there right now, you can have a private conversation. Go ahead. Recording equipment isn't going to pick you up. I have never experienced this kind of rudeness.
Again...
What in the heck?
For our members of council, hold your comments until I call on you. Please, we're going to have a very long night regardless, and it's going to be even longer if everybody's offering side commentary this entire evening. Alder Scannell?
So if you want to have a private conversation in a public hallway in a public building, you talk quietly. And if you're talking quietly, the audio cannot pick you up. And if you're not talking quietly, I don't know how anyone can classify that conversation as a private conversation. You need to speak quietly if you don't want people in the hallway to hear you. That's a private conversation. If you're speaking loud enough that the audio can hear you, people can hear you. That is not a private conversation. So to present this as what the city is doing is a lie. It's not what the city is doing. So, what's behind this lie? Well, again, the mayor alluded to some of it. Let's look who's pushing this lawsuit. We've got politicians playing politics, once again with city business. I'm tired of that, been dealing with that for two years. And I know they're playing politics because they knew about this recording months and months ago. If this is such a horrible violation of rights, if this is something we got to burn through in one night without vetting this, giving it its proper due, how come they got to wait months to file their report? It's because it's playing politics. It's not nothing to do with a real issue. And who else is involved in this lawsuit? Jane Doe. Well, who's Jane Doe? Ms. Angus. And who was involved in all three of those incidences I just talked about? Ms. Angus. Boy, if that isn't self-serving. This whole thing stinks. From this seat, this lawsuit was without merit and frivolous. Now, we'll see what the judge says. I'm sitting in this seat, he's sitting on the bench, he's got different experiences, different perspective, now certainly honor whatever he comes up with. But from everything I see here, and I'd like to see her different, this is a frivolous lawsuit. It's self-serving, and it's political. So now, this ordinance is not only based, motivated on lies and misleading information and dishonesty from top to bottom, it is fraught with peril. We are taking action, we are taking significant action here. We are putting ourselves in the place of the mayor. The mayor is being sued. It's the mayor that's being sued, not the council. If we take on this responsibility, then it's on us, then we get sued. And let's take a look at this here now. This security equipment at City Hall is the same equipment at our police station, on our buses, at transit. To make the case, the false case, that we're spying on people at City Hall, how can you not make that case elsewhere? How do we feel about pulling equipment from City, from Police Foire? We've got a couple of law enforcement people here, former law enforcement people. Is that a good idea? How would the police feel about that? For transit, their safety is federally mandated. Every year, they have to spend so much of their budget on safety measures. Right now, if some of that equipment goes, if that equipment goes down, that bus doesn't roll. It's parked until it's fixed. You're going to have one hell of a mess, just saying you can't use this audio equipment. And I don't know how you can say, "It's okay there, but not City Hall." What, we don't give a damn about the safety of City Hall? About the citizens here? About the public coming in and being harassed? A lady, whatever her age, that's acceptable behavior? You condone that behavior? So, I'd like to make the motion that we refer this to staff and give it a thorough vetting so we know exactly what we're getting into. We don't know what other municipalities have done this, we don't know what problems they've had, what lawsuits we could be liable for. There's a reason the law was like this. You just change it on a lie? To ram this through in one night, that's bad policymaking. There's no need for it. If you're still concerned about the audio, it's been discontinued, we've got the time. So, if someone will second my motion to refer this to staff, I'll explain why I made that motion and not another.
Alder makes a motion to refer this item to staff, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Alder Galvin.
Okay. I was going to make the motion just to receive and place on file, but it's really the same thing. Because Alder Weary has put in a communication and protection policy for a broad surveillance ordinance and policy to be developed, which means this would be taken up, no matter what we do here, if we receive and place on file or refer it to staff, it's the same thing. Staff can bring this back then, and we can have a full discussion on surveillance ordinances and policies that we might want to enact or not. There is no reason to rush this. In fact, there's plenty of reasons not to. Why are we taking on this risk without fully understanding all the risks we're taking on, all the changes we're making? Why are we taking, we don't have enough on our plate? We're part-time legislators. We're going to take on more responsibilities? I don't want to. I don't want the person following me to have to take on these responsibilities. But we can go deeper into that at committee. I think it's just bad policy to rush this through in one night.
Just a clarification, Alder, the motion to refer, is that to a committee or to staff?
Just to staff, who could then bring it back to committee, along with the broader, you know, discussion we're going to have for ordinances and policies on surveillance. So, I have sat through two brutal meetings on fluoride. And the people who brought that forward were people I knew, I knew a lot of them, and I liked a lot of them, respected a lot of them. But on that issue, and for some of them vaccines, they're wrong, flat-out wrong. And I told them they were wrong, and I asked them to please stop. And I said, "Stop wasting city time and city dollars." It cost me an ethics complaint filed against me, but it was the right thing to do. I am asking the vigilantes who believe in the big lie to please stand down, stop, what you are doing is wrong, it is hurtful, and it would be wonderful. I don't know many of these people, or know them well, but there are Alders who do, and it sure would be nice if some of them would stand up and do the right thing.
I think so, they're all there.
I just want to end up with, I'd like to know why you're here. Why are you here? Why'd you take this job? Is it to play politics with city business? Is it to support a faction of a party that fosters a bunch of vigilantes? Is that what's driving this? Is that what we're here for? I took this job because I want to make Green Bay my hometown, a vibrant city where people want to live, work, and play. That's what this job is about. And I would love it if you would all join me in that endeavor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alder. The motion on the floor is a referral to staff on this item that was seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that point in particular? Alder Weary?
I think that was a good 15 minutes, maybe more, I lost track. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, let me interrupt you something. You can say 15, too.
Alder Scannell?
I'll take the half of it, thanks. You always do, council members. I, Chris Weary, Randy Scannell, Eric Henrick, fill in the blank, being duly elected as alderman, mayor, et cetera, of the city of Green Bay, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and I will faithfully perform the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God. That's why we're here. Now, there were so many things said, here's why we shouldn't refer it, to speak to the point, here's why we should act on it tonight. One of my favorite quotes, and I've used it often, is from President John Adams. He said, "Facts are stubborn things. And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence." Now, fact, here's a fact, the Fourth Amendment right exists and applies to all US citizens. That's a fact. These rights are inherent to our very being, they're not subject to arbitrarily being removed at the whims of an elected official. Another fact, audio listening devices were installed in the Green Bay City Hall, approved by Mayor Henrick, without notification... without notifying the city council or the public. That's a fact. It's a fact that the public did not know until my announcement. Which is sad, because I think our own lawyer unfortunately stated, and this is from a news article. The lawyer also mentioned that city leaders told all members of city staff that audio recording devices were getting installed. They argued it was never a secret, never a secret, that the audio equipment was in the building, and said that people who claimed they didn't know about the audio recording devices actually did know. That's interesting, that that's the people that we have hired to represent us. Because I don't want that kind of representation. I'll tell you that right now, and there better be a damn good explanation for it later. Onto another fact, the ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union, openly opposes these type of intrusions on privacy. They have several articles out there now. Fact, the legal opinion of the State of Wisconsin Assembly opines these listening devices are illegal under state law. It's a fact that the legal opinion of the State of Wisconsin Senate opines these listening devices are illegal under state law. Another fact is, Thursday, March 2nd, Judge Mark Hammer heard testimony and ruled on a temporary injunction, a restraining order. And here's quotes from Judge Hammer, who listened to that testimony. He said, "In the building of government, where you think the people have the right to speak, they have to go outside or find an office to be, how can that be? Why are we recording in the hallway when really the concerns have been identified by our citizens as occurring in rooms and really don't involve incidents necessarily of violence, but of people yelling at each other?" Judge Hammer granted the restraining order, ordering the microphones be turned off immediately, and any recordings stay sealed until the court says otherwise. Then he went on to say, "They should at least have the opportunity to engage, meaning the public, in a private conversation with the person they're sitting next to, without fear that somebody is going to hear them or use it against them." The judge disagreed with the city's argument, saying there is a reasonable expectation for privacy in a public building, even if there are signs saying that audio recording is present. "I don't know if you lose your right to speak privately if somebody says you lose your right to speak privately," Judge Hammer said. So, I have plenty more to speak on it, but I believe there's plenty reason that the council should take action to something we had no knowledge of, we had no vote on, and this will clear and send a clear message, do not support it. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments on the referral motion in particular? Alder Burnett, then Alder Ack.
Yeah, uh...
I can, but this was... In particular. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's really no reason to refer this to staff, I'm not convinced at all. All it is, is adding a line, "The council shall have the authority over the use of audio recording technology in City Hall facilities." Again, "The council shall have authority over the use of audio recording techno..." Hadn't done or voted on any action up until this point, other than maybe the Parks Committee meeting a few days ago. So there's absolutely no reason to refer this back. I think overwhelmingly, not the entire population or city, but overwhelmingly, I think that people would think that this is a reasonable request, that the council take back this authority on audio recording technology in City Hall facilities. It's a very narrow addition to an existing ordinance. So, no need to refer it back, thank you.
Alder Ack?
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, when Alder Scannell was... So I don't know if you saw the Parks Committee meeting, but we did talk about this in depth. It was a couple-hour meeting. So we discussed this, and then we referred it to staff to write the ordinance, to add that addition onto it. So, it isn't rushed, we didn't just make it up tonight. We did talk extensively, we had, judge had to say, and one of the things that was pointed out was that, from my understanding, two out of the three incidences happened in different areas than where the listening devices were even installed. So he did point out that it was confusing that the listening devices were installed in places where there wasn't any incidences. So I just wanna clarify that, and thank you.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments on the referral motion in particular? Alder Galvin, then Alder Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for our attorney. It's felt here, I guess, by some members of council that we have to change the ordinance to limit the mayor's ability on the day-to-day management of the city. Can we not just vote without changing the ordinance to have the audio equipment removed, without starting down this road?
No, we talked about this a little bit at Parks, that council doesn't have the authority to just issue a directive countering the mayor's authority. It has to be done by ordinance or by policy, and because the day-to-day operations and management operational policies are within the purview of the mayor, it has to be a power that's called back under the authority of council, and then you can adopt a policy pursuant to that authority.
So if the mayor had brought this to council before installing it, and council said, "We're not, we're not really in favor, or we're not wild about this." With his authority to operate day-to-day, he could still have installed it?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So if at some point down the road, the mayor decides he's going to open City Hall at different times, turn off all the lights on one floor, the only way council can get him to change it is to change the ordinance?
To take those authorities back under purview, yes.
Okay, so we could eventually end up with like a little laundry list of all the things the mayor can and cannot do?
Theoretically, yes.
Hope we never get to that point. Okay. And then, as to referring it back... In agreement that I would like to see it referred back. I think that it needs to be looked at. I understand some people think that this was discussed at the committee level. I can't tell you how many times I've pulled out what hair I had left, because we had something settled at the committee level, and it gets pulled at council, and then we have to sit through hours and hours of discussion and argument, and then it gets referred back, and then back and forth. So, I don't have a problem, you know, with a committee making a recommendation, and then the council deciding. I'm of the belief that we all have opinions here. Some are pretty well researched, some are just gut checks. But the one I rely on is the court system. These are people, that that's their job, to study the law, to understand the law, and to make judgment on the law. It's not our job to say, "Yeah, I think this is the way it should be, because this is what I believe, and that's the way we're gonna run the city from now on." I would prefer to wait and to see what the courts have to say about this. The audio recordings have been shut down, they've been preserved, just in case the courts do rule in our favor, and we're able to have them. And I think that's what we should do. I think it's shut down, nothing's happening right now, and I think we should wait for the court system to make its judgment, and then move forward from there. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Alder Hutchinson?
Thank you. I listened to the Parks Committee meeting and was interested. There were a lot of people who had thoughts, one way or the other, pretty much against any audio. I'm a little bit confused that it took months to get, all of a sudden, to our attention, and then all of a sudden we have to act right away. Because I still have questions on what's gonna happen. The city attorney asked a very important question during the Parks Committee meeting, okay? After the discussion, and the city attorney delivered to Alder Weary what he wanted, power to put this into the council's hands. And she went and changed the proposal that was on the table, because it wasn't quite legal. And she made it legal, so we're actually debating something that's legal. So she did the, she did what was asked of her to do at that meeting, and then she asked this very important question. "Do you want this to cover City Hall or all the area within the city?" And there's two other areas where we have video equipment. And there was exactly three seconds of thought given before the answer was provided. Just City Hall. And I thought, "What? That doesn't make any sense. Why are we doing it here, not at the other two?"
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Alder Weary, what's your point of order?
Clarification, I guess, if you could. The Parks Committee only oversees City Hall. And knowing that this item was going to protection and policy for a broader policy, that's why we decided that.
Awesome. Well, that's a good description, thank you, Alder.
Thanks Alder. Alder Hutchinson?
Uh, there was the process of thinking about it, though. He actually thought about it and then answered. So, it would have been good to provide that. That's good. But there is an issue, though, with these other areas. I just, I talked to the police chief today regarding their use of the equipment, and broadly speaking, he said it's different, it's just City Hall. He said the transportation at the bus station is different, it's federally regulated. There's all kinds of things that are just dangling there. And, and we need to discuss this in whole, I think. Just to take this one thing out and say City Hall, I think is a half step, and we should know where we are in the broader picture. So I'm in favor of this motion, just so we get more information before we decide on this. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments on the motion to refer in particular? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for Attorney Bungert. The injunction or the temporary restraining order that was put in place, what is the timeline on that?
Attorney Bungert?
Yep. It is affected during, for the pendency of the litigation. So, there's no expiration date on it, per se.
Is there, is there an identified date that we return to court?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so, well, I think the question has been raised, why do we have to take action tonight? I think right there's your answer. So, we don't know. So, we, there's a couple of things that have been talked about tonight that I wanna touch on. And I think most people who know me and come to these meetings broadly say that I'm a very practical person who looks at both sides of the issue. So Alder Scannell, you gave me a lot of ammo here. I'm not MAGA, and I don't support the big lie. And I will say that I think the timing of this is suspect. And I think that there are some very interesting political actors involved here. And I tell you what, to me, it doesn't pass the smell test. The individual named in this lawsuit is also the source of some of the complaints. But I will say, what's the vet? Twelve people making this decision is better than one. We are elected as representatives of this body to make decisions about funding our police department, about funding our fire department, about funding our roads, about making our roads safe, but we're not capable of making a decision about whether or not we allow audio surveillance at City Hall. That just does not seem like an additional burden to me. And again, 12 people making that decision is better than one. What this ordinance does is it changes one small thing, sky's not falling. And it can always be redone when a more comprehensive dialogue can be had. But the point of having it before us today is to say that depending on when the timing of that court case occurs, this gives council the authority to say, "We're not gonna turn those back on regardless of what the decision of that court case is." And it gives us time to have a more broader, more comprehensive discussion. So, I heard it alluded to, Alder Weary, and that there is an agenda item coming up, because one of the communications that I had written down here at the end, which it sounds like would be redundant and I'll avoid, and I don't want this to get lost in this discussion, that I had written, "For consideration of possible action, the assessment, an appropriate response to security threats and risks to City Hall employees and visitors." That's why we're here. Right? So let's not lose sight of that. Because that is a really important centerpiece of this discussion. If that's gonna be covered in the comprehensive policy, I'll not submit this, and I'll let that occur at that time. But I do want to address that. The problem is, right now, unfortunately, it's the day-to-day decision-making that has led to this, right? But I wanna be sure that we're not confusing the complexity of this issue with making day-to-day management decisions. This issue's far more complex than that. And I think if we don't acknowledge that, we're doing a disservice to ourselves. We've had, what, a year and a half, two years? I mean, since this stuff has been put in place. And at no time, at least, have Biden notified until this came up. But the reason why I say this is also suspect, is because in August, the Freedom of Information Act request was submitted requesting the surveillance footage, the audio surveillance footage, from the very person who's in the lawsuit. I'm just trying to be fair here, because I tell you what, it stinks on both sides. It really does. But the reality is, we have this issue before us now, and we have to act on it now, because it's before us, and it is within our jurisdiction and purview to do it if we change the ordinance. And again, I go back to 12 people, making that decision is better than one. And I think all of us here are concerned about the safety of our staff, and I don't want that to get diminished in this discussion, because that shouldn't happen. But I've also always been a big believer, and the mayor and I talked about this yesterday. I don't personally like blanket policies that are designed to address one or two problems. Rather find solutions to those problems. If an imminent solution doesn't exist, then, you know, but we haven't even had that discussion. Right? Again, a year and a half, these things have been out, and I had no idea that we had these security threats at City Hall. And that's, that's what's most concerning to me, and why I think it's so important that we say, "Hey, we're gonna nip this immediate bud, you know, this immediate issue in the bud." We're gonna nip it in the bud because we don't know when that lawsuit's coming back. But more importantly, we are not gonna lose sight of why we're having this discussion in the first place. And I hope that everyone sitting around this table can commit and agree to that. Because that is an important discussion, and that's a discussion that might cost us money, might cost, it might require some policy changes. But we are all responsible and accountable for that because of the very oath that Alder Weary read to us before. So I just, I hope we can de-politicize this a little bit right now in its moment, and look at this through an honest set of, honest set of glasses and say, "Look, this council should have the authority over something that does infringe on a constitutional right." And we can argue whether or not it does or not. But, but why leave something open with risk when you can close that? You can close that door immediately and then continue to have the dialogue. I just think that's a reasonable approach. And so because of that, I'm gonna oppose the referral. I appreciate where you're coming from, Alder Scannell, I hope you know that. But I'm gonna oppose referral, because I think, I think that we can eliminate the risk right now that we have of these lawsuits, whilst, I mean, the lawsuit's already open. But I wanna, I wanna avoid any future risk, while at the same time addressing the concerns that exist.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments on referral? Alder Galvin, then Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor.
And the reason why I'm taking this second kick at the cat here, so to speak, is I do have two letters from city employees that they wanted me to read. And I'm just wondering if we're gonna open the floor? I'll save it till then. Or they'd like to, because what we've been talking about is something that they're concerned about, and they express in these letters. So if this is the appropriate time, fine, if not, then I'm...
We could maybe hold off until we dispense with referral, and then on the item itself?
All right, thank you.
You bet. Alder Scannell?
Yes, I think actually the points, some of the points raised, support my position. If you're trying to eliminate risk, you can't eliminate risk. We're putting ourselves at risk instead of the mayor. We're taking on this risk. Why? Why are we taking on this risk? We could be sued. You can't eliminate that possibility. I don't wanna be in that position. And there's a reason why this is in the mayor's purview, security. If something needs to happen quickly, we're a deliberative body. We, we should move slow. The mayor can move quickly, and things can be adjusted as, as we move along. I think the arguments you've made, support referring this, so we can have a bigger discussion, a comprehensive discussion. What kind of risks are we taking on? I don't understand how you say, "We're gonna be eliminating risks." We're taking on all the risks. That's not eliminating risks, that's taking them on. And, and if someone says, "This is the same equipment, police station, buses," someone says, like, "They came here..." someone says, like, they came here and said, you get rid of this equipment, or I'm taking you to court. We said, no. And they were taking, so we're taking to court. If someone comes up and says, you take this equipment off the buses, and we say, no, we're being taken to court. Why do we want to be taken to court? Let the mayor, who gets the big bucks, be taken to court. We're part-time legislators. I feel, this is well within his purview. Understand, people getting all snitty, we weren't involved, we didn't know. Okay. Not perfect. But to jump to the conclusion that now we gotta make this change, I think that's a big jump. And again, what is driving this? Why is this before us? This, what stinks, the lies. Without that, there's no issue here. This would have never been brought up. Never. The only thing moving this is politics, and to support the vigilantes. Who wins out when the audio's off? Not our staff. Their safety isn't insured. It's bad actors. Who wants audio equipment, who wants surveillance equipment turned off? Bad actors. People who don't want their behavior recorded. That's who we're supporting with this. Right? Show me how I'm wrong. So I, I, I think, you can't say we're concerned about safety staff while we say, oh, City Hall, your security, you don't need this. Everybody else, oh yeah, police. Buses, yeah, yeah, you need this. You didn't know about what was all going on at City Hall? Yeah, that maybe, there's some confidentiality there with personnel. I don't know if we could have been better informed on that. I heard things here and there. And it's, I always thought it was a shame more people didn't know. But I didn't know if it was something to really go into or not. I think the more we can disclose on just what has been happening here, the vigilante-ism, I think the better we would all be off, as much as we can go into that. Again, we're dealing with personal issues here, so I don't know what kind of confidentiality would inhibit that discussion. But I, I think it's a mistake to rush into taking this risk on ourselves without fully discussing the risk and the whole package of audio. You just mentioned it's gonna be, have a bigger discussion. Why not make this part of the bigger discussion? I don't understand that. Why not make this part of the bigger discussion? Because it's gonna involve all those other components. Let's fully understand that. So I think the argument made by the Honorable Alder supports my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Would it be possible to dispense with this motion and move on to the substance of the, the matter? Okay, let's do that. And then we'll move on to more general comments. All in favor of the motion to refer? Use the board?
Yes, please.
All right. We will use the board for the vote. This is on the motion to refer to staff. Alders, Alders. Can we, can we, can we not? Can we just? Jeez. The motion is to refer to staff. Everybody understands what that means.
You may vote.
It was up there. It's back up. But fails eight to, eight to four?
Correct. No.
All right. We're back to the item itself. I've got a long list here. Alder Grant, Stoyer, Scannell, Brunette, Weary. Alder Grant?
I have a statement first and then a couple of questions. In response to Alder Scannell, laws in the Constitution is about right and left. It's about what's right and what's wrong. It was wrong to install these devices without the knowledge of the public and even staff. That is a fact. Is, if it's about security, why did the mayor and his staff have access and not just our police department? I have a few questions. Director Folds. We were, it was made apparent that notification went out to staff in December about the devices that were installed outside of, or the chambers. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There was an email.
Did that notify the staff of both devices on first floor and second floor?
I believe the devices on the first floor were not in place at that time.
Did notification go out to staff about the devices outside of the clerk's office?
No, there were ongoing discussions about sending out that notice, and that notice wasn't sent out until February.
So right there, Alder Scannell is a fact. Did you ask any, I understand you didn't get any pushback from employees about this, but did you do any follow-up as a survey now that it's in place? How is the work environment now that this is installed? Do you feel safer? Do you feel that there's an invasion of your privacy? Do you like being watched all day at your job?
So, when it came to the installation of the audio device on the second floor, again, that was, you know, previous employees that installed that. And there wasn't a lot of communication on that going out except for the email. Then when it comes to the first floor installation of the audio, it's in a public hallway. So I don't think there needs to be a survey about, you know, watching people when they work because people are not working typically in the hallway. So to answer your question after that, no, we did not send out emails if people felt more secure with the installation of the audio devices.
But staff do use the hallways to talk to each other, leave and enter work?
Yeah, so I was just addressing that, we're not watching employees work. That's, I was just addressing that. So no, there was not an email or a survey sent out if, if employees felt more safe.
Was there any policy or guidelines as to when and why staff could access the audio footage? Were there circumstances? If you, or could anybody at any point, or I shouldn't say anybody, I apologize, the people that had access to it, technically, if they wanted to access it, they could. There was no guidance as to, unless this happens, you are not allowed to access it?
I don't believe the individuals who are set up to have access really, my understanding is they did not access it when it was set up. So whether or not there was policy set up, I don't think they had any intentions of accessing it. So, and I think if anything did come up, they most likely would have reached out to IT in the law department before they accessed it.
Okay. So I look at it from another side as our staff. There are personal things that happen at work. There are health issues, things that come up, discussions that could be picked up on this, audio devices. That is where I'm also looking to protect our staff. If we want to create a happy, healthy work environment, I wouldn't, if I have something personal to speak to my manager about or something, or if I go to talk to someone because I can confide in them, I don't want to worry that it is now on camera that I'm going into that person's office or entering the first floor when I don't normally go down there if there's someone there that I can confide in and personal things. So it's not just about the residents. It's also about our staff. So if it is about the safety, I would like to motion to amend that we have power over all city property, not just City Hall, when it comes to the devices.
So Alder Grant makes a motion to amend to include, you say, all city properties?
Correct.
With this policy and ordinance, or is, are we just on the ordinance right now? Attorney Bungert?
I'm sorry?
So this is just in reference to the ordinance?
This is in reference to correct the ordinance.
Okay. So, including all city properties in the ordinance change is the amendment offered by Alder Grant? Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Eck. Discussion on that amendment. Alder Galvin?
Kevin, you picked the wrong day to be here. Commander Wark, how does the police department feel about having city council turning off the cameras that they have securing their facilities, especially in light of the fact that they still don't have a security fence to ensure that people cannot enter their property?
In speaking with Chief Davis this afternoon, first of all, with the pending litigation, I would defer to the city attorney if we can speak on this.
Attorney Bungert?
I'm sorry, I'm conferring with...
Question was, how does the police department feel about having their security cameras turned off?
Um...
Want a clarification?
Alder Johnson?
For Alder Galvin, are you referring to cameras or referring to audio?
Well, it sounds like this is what Alder Grant is asking for. And if it's just audio, then how would the police department feel about the audio equipment being turned off at the police department?
So to clarify, the injunction only applies to the City Hall facilities? And PD has its own system that's not subject to the injunction, nor are those operations?
TRO.
TRO. Is not subject to the ordinance change because that's a police facility. And so what is shut off is the audio feed that goes into shift command, correct? And that, we can discuss.
But is Alder Grant, that's what you're asking, is that, that audio equipment be controlled by City Hall, by the council?
All city property in general, so if there's anything... Coming forward for other buildings or other areas, that it comes before council, and we have a discussion if we feel that audio is sufficient, or if just video is enough for that. I don't see us turning video off at the police department. They have, they monitor it. The difference, the biggest difference is who has access to the audio in City Hall is very different than who has access over the footage of the police department.
One point of clarification for Alder Grant's motion is expanding it to all city property, like including transit and PD and fire. We haven't researched that.
Okay.
So there is the issue of PFC governance, Transit Commission governance. So I don't know what that interplay would be. Certainly, it can extend to other city facilities, like, like the DPW shops and the park shop and other city facilities like that. But ones that are under the purview of fire, PD, transit, water, where they're under the umbrella of the city, but they also have their own commissions and authorities that govern them, that may, that may complicate things as to whether we can do that.
And I'm more concerned, yeah, with like your example, not, sure, yep.
So I just wanted to clarify, so you understood the, yeah, okay. Sorry.
So to clarify, that's, it's giving city council authority over audio capabilities at all city properties?
Okay. Would that include the body cameras on officers?
Attorney Bungert?
Um, in theory, yes, it's a city, it's city property. I mean, it's city equipment. We could probably make a caveat for that, but, and that has its own set of policies and statutes that govern how those recordings are kept, used. There's a whole set of policies within PD on how they're used, when they're turned on, how they're turned on, when they're turned off. So that will take a lot of review to ensure that we're not, we're not contradicting other policies that have to be in place.
I certainly understand that, but this is, the motion on the floor is to do that.
Right.
And then I, so I'm asking Commander Wark, how would you feel about city council potentially turning off the audio equipment on body cameras, within the station, within the squad cars?
We would recommend that that would not be a good recommendation to make. And I'll give you some context on that. The police department, anytime we collect any video, any audio, it has judicial oversight. In the event that we have, we're working an investigation and we collect what we would consider as evidence, that has to be obtained lawfully. And when we put together an investigation, and that investigation eventually will go in front of a prosecutor, and through discovery go through the public defender or an attorney representing the accused, that that evidence be provided, and that the courts will determine whether that evidence was obtained lawfully. With the judicial oversight that we have, that is our checks and measures to capturing video, whether that includes audio or not. I'll give you an example. In the event that there is a, let's say, a large-scale investigation, a critical incident, a homicide, you name it, and in the course of the investigation, the police department had to determine whether or not to put up a pole camera in a location to gather evidence, to do surveillance, look, a legitimate law enforcement reason, again, with judicial oversight, because we have to collect this evidence lawfully to collect that video and audio evidence. If the decision were to be made from council to have that oversight, we would end up having to go through council to talk about critical incidents, such as a homicide investigation, which potentially could divulge protected information through council and not through the courts. Another example, what ends if there was, if there was an investigation into city, of another city employee, for whatever reason, and we had to, again, lawfully collect that audiovisual capabilities? We could not do that impartially if we had to go through and get council oversight on including the audio and visual evidence that we have. So in conclusion, we would not recommend nor support that oversight from the police department.
Thank you, Commander Wark. And I don't know if this is for Director Folds or Attorney Bungert. It was my understanding, and apparently I'm wrong, I thought that the recordings were treated as evidence that was collected in the first and second floor of the audio. That it went to the police department and was stored through their system, and it can only be accessed by two particular people in the law department. But from, is, it's correct now that other people can look at it?
There was access available to other persons, but, and that was highlighted in our responsive briefs and in the action. But the, the recordings weren't necessarily automatically evidence. It becomes evidence, right, if there was an incident tied to the recordings. They are certainly public records, subject to withholding, redaction, you know, balancing test considerations, just like any other record in the city. But they weren't necessarily deemed as evidence right away. I would defer to Attorney Mather for additional comment as well.
Attorney Mather?
Thank you. We did get clarification. Audio and video is at PD because it's one of the more, most secure locations that the city has. But it's not actually a PD server, and the videos aren't actually treated as evidence unless they're needed for a criminal case, in which case they become part of the police record. They are still maintained as city records, subject to the city records retention schedule, which only requires us as long as we need the space.
Is it possible, is it, is there a way of documenting when someone accesses that information? Is it recorded, like, say, sitting here at my laptop, on this date, at this time, I was looking at video from yesterday?
There is an access log, but it's, it's maintained, the access log is stored for 30 days. So we don't have, like, three years' worth of access data.
Well, we only keep the video for 120 days. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
And the system is just set up to only maintain the access log for 30 days? That's why it's only kept for that long.
Has any of the video or audio recording ever been used in a criminal case? And I'm not talking about, you know, misdemeanor or felony, even down into ordinance violations.
Video containing audio?
Video or audio or both together?
I know of at least one incident in which a video that did not contain audio is currently being used in a municipal court action. Beyond that, I don't know, because I'm not intimately familiar with all of the different police records.
And was that video useful in determining if there was a violation or not?
From our perspective in determining whether to prosecute the violation, yes, but that is still ongoing. So it hasn't been resolved.
Oh, it's pending?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So, questions or comments on the amendment offered by Alder Grant? Alder Stoyer, and then Alder Johnson?
I'm on the list here, so, thank you, Your Honor. A number of these comments I wanted to make before, but we keep moving along, and I haven't had a chance to really visit on this, so I'll try to keep it under three minutes.
And just on that point, Alder Steyer-
On this, on this point?
No, no, I'm just saying, on this point, you have the opportunity, once we get back to the original item, to make broad-based comments.
Okay, so we just, we're just speaking on-
This is the, this is the amendment that expands it to all city facilities.
At first blush, I'm not in favor of that, you know, we're, we're looking at city hall specifically, and I can talk more about that, on buses, a lot of noise, a lot of, you know, some, some tough situations, the police department, of course, I mean, that's a whole different can of worms, so I, we're, we're looking at specifically city hall here, and I, I want to stay with that, so, I'm not in favor of referral.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I appreciate the intent behind the amendment, and I think that there's some merit in a discussion on that topic at a later date. I, too, am not in favor of the amendment, in fact, if this amendment were to pass, it would jeopardize my support for the other amendment. And the reason I say that is not because I'm afraid to take on that issue, in fact, I think we ought to have that discussion at some point, but I think with some of the complexities that Attorney Bungert alluded to, whether or not we even have authority over that, that area, whether or not the federal government, for example, has jurisdiction over things like buses, state statute, and police departments, I think there's a lot of nuance there that does matter. City hall's clean, and, and we know that our jurisdiction can be there if we take action on the ordinance that's presented to us, but with this amendment, it really muddies the water a lot, that would, that would create a lot of pause and concern for me about whether or not we're in compliance with the law after that. So, my objective today with this discussion is to eliminate risk, not open up more risk. So, so I, too, am opposed to the amendment, however, I do support the spirit, and I do think that we ought to continue that dialogue, just at a different date.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the amendment itself? Alder Scannell, and Alder Weary?
I don't support the amendment either, I, it's opening up a bigger can of- And if your view is that security equipment is unconstitutional, which is what you seem to be saying about what's the security system here, and it's the same security system everywhere else, that means you're going to be disabling the security system everywhere, which I, I think is overly ill-advised, I, there's a difference between security systems and spying systems. There's equipment where you can hear a pin drop, that's not-
Other-
Sure they can, anybody can go out in the hall and talk. If you can have a private conversation, you're going to be talking low, because someone could be coming out in the hall at any time to hear you. If you want a private conversation, you're going to talk low, and the audio can't hear you purposely, that's why we have, that's the security, that's why it's security and not spying equipment. So, you can paint all kinds of fantasies, but we, I feel we need to stick with the facts, and to broaden out this project to cover everything, I think is a big mistake, compounding a mistake. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say that when- Then it truly is spying equipment, so, I think that's not even debatable, that's abhorrent. However, on this point, I think we should narrow our focus to what came out of committee, and what we have in front of us tonight, otherwise it will make it a really broad topic, and that is the purpose of it going to protection and policy, to have that. In my research, Madison and Milwaukee both have some pretty, pretty big, comprehensive surveillance policies, most of, not all of their surveillance do want to have that, most certainly, so I'll be voting against it, not that I don't want to talk about it, thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant, on your amendment?
Yeah, and I appreciate everybody's input, and I am okay with withdrawing the, my motion until we can have more discussion on it, I just want it, I don't want to ignore the other city properties that we have that is not police and fire, we have a lot, so it is something to think about, so yes, I will withdraw my motion on that.
Okay, Alder Grant makes a motion to withdraw, is there a seconded by Alder Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, that amendment has been withdrawn. Back to the original item. Alder, let's see, I've got Alder Steyer, Burnett, Weary, Scannell.
Nope, no, not me.
Alder Steyer.
Can you refresh me again?
This is the original ordinance.
I, I don't have a problem with that, and I, I will say this, trying to take politics out of this, you know, I, first of all, when I signed up to be an Alder, I, public servant, that's it, all this other stuff is a lot of noise, and I don't like it, but it's, it is what it is, and we got to deal with it. The big problem I have was that, you know, city employees, some said they were notified about these audio devices, and then we were waiting for an email from somebody, it didn't show up, so we were thinking, well, what's going on here? And it said, everybody, everybody was notified, I think we, we could have avoided a big problem if we would have just communicated better, that's it. That's all I, that's all I wanted to see, just better communication, so, the public wasn't aware of it, the council wasn't aware of it. I'm not going to delve into all the different political wranglings, left or right, on this, I'm just looking at the situation as it stands, period. And it was just poor communication, wherever that happened, maybe some, you know, the administration thought that we can move ahead and just do this, but I, you know, just a simple discussion matter with us, letting us know, would have really helped. I also sat in at the court proceedings in Judge Hammer's chambers, and I'm pretty much at the point where, when it goes to court, it goes to court, and you got to deal with it, you know, whatever else comes out of that, fine, locally, we can't probably do a whole lot, but we have to wait and see what, what the judge says, or what, what comes out of that. That's really about it, better communication, period, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett, and then Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a brief, hopefully, at the next agenda item, once we dispense of this, we should really open the floor, I think we need to hear from the people, not necessarily in this, I think we can dispense of this quickly, now that we've gone through this discussion, it's a good motion, I'm in favor of it. Mr. Mayor, Alder Scannell keeps talking about how you're being sued, and that is true, and that we're not being sued as a council, that may be true as a body, but as a government, the city of Green Bay is being sued, so we have a duty to do what's in the best interest of the city, and as far as I'm concerned, we are being sued, because we are the governing body that oversees city government, and so you can't just keep saying that it only involves the mayor, it involves the entire city government, which then involves us. So, this ordinance change ensures that, that we say definitively, if we vote in the affirmative, that we are not okay with audio surveillance at city hall. We want to step in, we want, want to use our power as a governing body to make sure that we say we have control over audio surveillance, because we can't lightly brush aside valid constitutional concerns. This is not a settled court case, okay? This is going to go on for a while, I'm, have very serious concerns, I'm not some radical either, I look at things objectively, and I don't rush in either direction, I try to get as many facts as I can, which is what I have been doing, so I'm in support of this motion, I think we need to dispense of this and move to the, the meat of the agenda, because we're going to be talking about this for a while still, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
No, I pulled it, thank you.
All right. Some final comments, Alder Scannell, and then Alder Eck?
I, I think there is a big difference, and I'd like to ask our city attorney, there's a big difference between the mayor being sued and the council being sued. I mean, we are not being sued, you may see you feel like it, but we're not, and it's a big difference, when our name is on the dotted line. And if, would you get some clarification from our attorney on what some of that means?
Attorney Bungert?
Sure, so, essentially, Alders can be sued, Alders can be sued in their official capacity, just like the mayor can be sued in, in his official capacity, so with the current litigation, it's the city as an organization that's being sued, as a municipal corporation, and the mayor in his official capacity. I think what Alder Weary, or Weary, Alder Scannell is, I'm looking at Alder Weary, but talking to Alder Scannell, is alluding to is that if a particular decision or authority is, or a particular decision is under the jurisdiction or authority of the council, there is a likelihood that individual Alders in their capacity will be named, along with the city and the mayor, and, and everybody else, typically, you try and name all applicable parties, and obviously, that becomes a much more complex defense, because you are now balancing 12 Alders, the city as an organization, and the mayor, and that becomes a lot more complicated litigation in that sense.
Alder Eck?
I would like to make a motion to pass the ordinance-
It's already been made.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was an ended, so, we're back to the original? Okay, took a while.
Tell me about it. Alder Johnson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if, because ordinances need two readings, and while this isn't listed as first and second reading, technically, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
We're not on the ordinances yet, so it's just the, um-
Aren't we on L2?
Yeah, but-
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yep. Other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Alder Weary requests the board vote?
This is to approve the ordinance?
Yep, this is on approval of L2. The whole system is weird tonight.
Mayor, point of order.
Alder Johnson?
Where's, where's it on the back?
Should be under ordinances for first reading.
Oh, I apologize, there it is.
It's six, I think, right?
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
So, now the votes have started, you may vote.
Scannell voted her. All right, then that is approved, nine to three. Onto item M1. Motion? Alder Weary makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Campbell.
Just give me a moment.
Open the floor.
I am going to make a motion to open the floor, now I know we've been here almost two hours, do we need a five-minute break, or, or do you want to?
I don't. I don't. But we can, you want a break?
I, I don't, I don't want Alders, because they may need to use the restroom, kind of coming and going, and missing the testimony, so I really want them to hear.
We can take a 10-minute break, we'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. Seconded by Alder Steyer, all in favor, say aye.
No.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open, I do have a couple listed here, so I'll just read these to get us going. Scott Litticoat, Scott's still here, yep, so, sir, if you just want to, offer your name and address, and then three minutes.
I have many concerns over the recording of my private conversations in this city hall, but I have specific practical concerns from three occasions in the last year. One was two months ago, when I spoke with my Alder person right out in this hallway before a council meeting. Twice I've been here as an election observer. Can I trust that confidential conversations I had under a listening device weren't used to cover up irregularities that were discussed before they were reported, from a system that was secretly installed? No, I can't. Presently, no private citizen or Alder person can be sure that what they say can't be used in some manipulative way. Shifting gears and concerning security, no one likes confrontations, but here's what people say most often when I ask them about the conflicts you've had here, they should try working retail. You have better security and police response time here than in most places, and audio surveillance is about a fifth line of defense security measure, anyway. Perhaps the security of city hall should be openly and publicly reviewed, but that's an issue for another time. The secret, until recently, audio surveillance system needs to go. Finally, to those who claim this is a partisan political play, I say hogwash, you all got my attention when you jacked my property taxes 30 percent, then my money is used to do this? Take the system down. No matter the mayor, I'll be back if it ever returns, I want government that listens, but not this way.
Thank you, sir. Next is Justin Schmidtka. And just a reminder from members of the gallery, we don't, we don't have applause, so just, you can keep that in mind, go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Justin Schmidtka, and I'm a resident here in Brown County. I learned tonight that I'm a vigilante, but I'm here to talk to you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that government doesn't get to do is trash the Constitution. Multiple members of this elected body understand the Constitution, which I believe that you do not, especially the Fourth Amendment. I believe that you do not understand HIPAA, and how private conversations need to be maintained in private. Furthermore, the Fourteenth Amendment, and, I mean, there's so much that I heard tonight, so much nonsense from a couple of members of the Alders, but, did you know, Mr. Mayor, that the Bill of Rights was ratified in 1791? Did you know that the Bill of Rights is a part of the Constitution of the United States? Do you believe that as a mayor, an elected representative of the people, that you have the right to go against the Constitution for your own safety? No, I'm assuming no.
Do you get to offer comments, sir?
Sure, sure, but the people's rights don't end where your fear begins. And I, and I hope that District, doesn't even matter, Wisconsin statute does allow a person to record that's within a party. You have to be a physical member of the party, a bugged camera is not a physical individual within the party. In Wisconsin, people can be sued, held legally accountable for what you have done, and, Mr. Mayor, you are not above the law, but you have acted above the law in many ways, you can, you can deny, you can shake your head, but the reality is, the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution is, is set in stone, it's, it's written in iron pen, and you violated that, that, that constitutional amendment, so, boy, just, just with listening to all this, you know, the only real thing that I can honestly think that's a, 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 a mayor could go against a city to record individuals without letting the representative body of, is, is, is for blackmail. This kind of stuff, this kind of stuff can't be used in a court of law, because it's against the law. So, what, what, one would speculate that blackmail could be used against political adversaries. Now, I'm not accusing you of this, Mr. Mayor, but what I am saying is that many of the public here in Green Bay, Brown County, and the state of Wisconsin, and quite frankly, nationally, would wonder. So, at this point, I think that you would be doing a service to the people of this city by resigning for your lack of understanding of the Constitution and the oath in which you took, a, a pledge that you signed to represent the people of Wisconsin, I'm sorry, the people of Green Bay. Your actions are deplorable, as many of us have been called.
Three minutes have expired, just a quick question. Are your comments directed at the sheriff of Brown County, as well?
My comments are directed at you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you, you are the one-
But not at, not at the sheriff.
You are the one that made the choice to put these cameras into-
Right, but I guess my question is connected to the fact that they have a similar system within our sheriff's department lobby, so you don't, you don't have any-
Judicial oversight is not the same as what you've done.
You don't have any issue with them.
Judicial oversight is not, is not the same of what you've done, as, as the commander had, had mentioned.
No, I'm talking about the, within the lobby at the sheriff's department.
Within a lobby of the sheriff's department?
You don't have any, you don't have any issue with that?
I mean, we, we can, we can discuss, like, the different lobbies, but what we're, what we're here talking about is private conversations that have been-
So, the, the Fourth Amendment doesn't apply in the sheriff's lobby?
Stop adjuring-
I'm, I'm-
Yes, see, well, I mean, but, but-
I think you're carrying a dishonesty.
Correct.
I guess, you know, some kind of bad, you know, verbal altercations that were going on, but signage wasn't put up to stop it?
You know.
So.
You know, for the individuals within this body that have talked about the safety, I would remind them that they have a Second Amendment right. That's the first and foremost. You have a Second Amendment right. You have the right to protect yourself, okay? Even on city property, if your life is being. So, yes, you do have the right to defend yourself. Please show me in the Constitution, in the Second Amendment, where it says I don't have the right to defend myself in the event that somebody is attacking me.
Okay, any other questions for our guests?
Did I answer your question? I apologize.
Well, in a roundabout way. I appreciate you talking.
Sure. All right.
All right.
Well, as Green Bay's Batman, I appreciate your time, and you all have a wonderful evening.
All right. Thank you, Justin. We don't have any other folks listed, but if you would like to approach the podium and state your name and address, you're welcome to speak. And then just a quick check on Zoom. Is there anyone? We should probably go to Zoom first. There's one person. Hopefully, it's working.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to be able to deal with that.
Okay. That's interesting. Okay.
This is bullshit. Turn her off.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Seiler. I live at 124 Alvinas Street on the west side.
Sir, repeat, please.
Sure. My name is Steve Seiler. I live at 124 Alvinas Street over on the west side. When I got here this evening, I was going to trash. Okay? Then I heard the allegations of the political thing, and I thought, I'm going to trash. But I'm not going to trash because that would be wrong. I'm here to talk about leadership. Mayor, when you were elected president, president, my God, mayor, okay, you did things like you prioritized the need for economic success and a focus on infrastructure, but his first order of business was to make sure there's peace at City Hall. The final point that you made was that we want to do the city's business in a really decent and civil way, and so that what I'm most interested in is pursuing immediately. Okay? And then tonight, you got up and you said what you said about why you did what you did. Okay? A year ago, 16 months ago, whenever it first started, okay, as a leader of the city of Green Bay, if you would have gotten front of this council and said, hey, we're having significant issues, I shouldn't even use the word significant, you're talking three incidences, okay? We're having these issues. I would like to put up video and audio recordings. We wouldn't be here today because this all would have been taken care of one way or the other. Okay? When it first came up, you were asked by the council, please stop it until the litigation is over with. You could have stopped it then, but you insisted on proceeding with it. Okay? The judge said to stop it, and your lawyer said, we're going to fight it. This isn't leadership.
No, that's not accurate.
That's what it said. Okay? But anyway, okay, a good leader would not do that. A good leader would sit down and think about what he wants to do and present the best way possible for the city to proceed. All right? And that's, I've only got one other thing to say. Okay? Randy, follow the science.
All right. Next, we got David Vanderlees.
Sandy Juno, 616 Dauphin Street.
I just called David Vanderlees.
Oh. David?
Everybody wants to know what the facts are in this. David Vanderlees, 146 Alpine Drive. Everybody wants to know what the facts are here. It seems like everyone wants to question the facts, and people think that other people are insurrectionists. I don't see any insurrectionists here. I see a bunch of neighbors, friends, people in the community. But I think, you know, Randy brings up a point that, you know, this is all about an election steal and everything. You know, this all got started because Janet Angus was in a poll observer, and she was observing the polls, and she seen someone come in with two ballots. And she said, hey, you can't have two ballots, you know? At the time, they had the election observers on the far side of City Hall, and you had to talk loud so that people could hear. Actually, we had to go to court so that we could actually put some seats in the clerk's office and actually observe the voting process. So Janet just kind of said, I'm going to raise my voice so that there's, the witnesses can hear what's going on here. And, you know, Janet wanted to make sure the process was done right, and I think staff took a problem to that, that she was kind of stopping some election, you might call it fraud, or maybe a mistake, or whatever it was, it's not right. One person can't bring in two ballots. And obviously, there was an issue made with that, and Janet was given a disorderly conduct over this situation. And she made a discovery request, and that's how we found out the audio existed and that it was being done. So there was no signs up, no one knew it was happening, and I think we all can agree as a fact that if you record a conversation and you don't make the other party aware of it, then a felony has taken place. It's a class H felony, and it's called wiretapping. It breaks the law. It's a federal law. So when you start to look at that, you know, you start to think, gee, she was pointing out an election irregularity and got a ticket for it, you know? You can kind of see, Randy, how some of these perceptions can come up. And I think we have to go out of our way to make sure that, you know, we don't have these perceptions. And I think as the citizens of election observers, it's our job to question these things. And that's how this whole matter got started. But in the process where you didn't have signs up and you were recording, I think we all know that a wiretapping law was broken and that the crime was committed. So I filed a complaint with the district attorney and the sheriff, asking for an investigation to see if a crime has been committed. I haven't heard anything about it, but I would like to see maybe the council ask for an investigation. Don't you want to know? I mean, don't you want to have someone look into the fact that, hey, we didn't have signs up? People didn't know they were recorded. Did a crime was committed, and who committed it? Should there be a penalty for it if it's a felony to wiretap? Is it your felony? You know, these are some things we got to look at. So I filed a complaint, and here's my complaint. I'll read what I filed with the sheriff and the DA, and I would ask this board to also file, to ask for an investigation. But I wrote, "On August 9th, 2022, and November 8th, 2022, I engaged in private oral communications with fellow citizens and other poll watchers in the first floor inside Green Bay City Hall. I had a reasonable expectation of privacy for my oral communications as my speaking volume was low and the parties involved were less than two feet apart."
Mr. Vanderlees, your three minutes has expired.
Can he have my three minutes?
No. So just bring us to a conclusion here.
It'll only take another 40 seconds to finish this. Okay. Basically, what I had said, I said, you know, due to this incident, I am a victim of a class H felony by the city of Green Bay and Green Bay Mayor Eric Gindrich. This is based on Wisconsin statutes under Chapter 96827 and 96831, as well as Wisconsin's Supreme Court's Dertrow decision in 2008. Since it has recently been learned that the Green Bay Police Department was involved in the secret surveillance effort of the public, the investigation there would seem to present a conflict of interest. I respectfully request Brown County District Attorney and Sheriff launch an official investigation into the entirety of the matter since this egregious crime has been committed on citizens who reside in the county of jurisdiction for which they were elected to protect. And I would ask you guys to file a similar complaint, find out if a crime was committed. And I think we all agreed it was your decision. That seemed to be a fact, that you guys had no choice in the matter. So if a crime was committed, I think it would be on you, and I just think it needs to be investigated. And I would just ask you guys to ask the sheriff department to do something about it. Thanks.
Yeah, Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Vanderlees. Were you with Ms. Angus when?
No, but I'm not a party to lie. I don't have to go in closed session. I'm able to listen to anyone's audio that they're presenting as evidence.
And when did you find out about the audio recording? That, you know, things were being recorded?
On, let's see, probably in early February, I would say. I had a discussion with Janet. She told me what had happened, and, yeah, she had the evidence.
And when did you file your complaint?
I filed my complaint on February 13th, 2023.
And was that at the sheriff's department or at the district attorney's office?
I hand-delivered it to both.
The both of them, and they haven't responded to you yet?
I have not gotten a thing.
Okay, but you knew about this before February 13th?
Very shortly before February 13th.
So like over a month ago?
I probably knew about this on or about February 1st, 2nd, maybe?
Oh, so over a month ago. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Sandy Juno, 616 Dauphin Street, Green Bay. I think what's most distressing for me is the fact that what we're talking about here tonight is a violation of the U.S. Constitution, Fourth Amendment, as well as Wisconsin one-party consent law, where illegal recordings shouldn't be happening. And now, you know, starting with the mayor, and there's been some other people here that have insinuated that this is being politicized. That is not the case. This is a case where people have found out clearly months after you has put in this recording information that we have found out, and now someone has taken action. The U.S., the Senate for one. Mr. Scannell targeted one person who is a plaintiff. But I want you to know, probably just about everyone in this room, including myself, and some of you, could also have been plaintiffs on this case along with the Senate, because many of us were recorded without our knowledge. So you need to keep that in mind. If this one person stepped back and withdrew from this case, you'd probably have 100 more people coming forward to be added to this case. That I can guarantee because I've listened to many people. I've organized observers that have been here in the building, that I had no clue that there was recording equipment in here, and if I had been aware, I certainly would have alerted them. So I think we need to be very careful about how, you know, we put this in the media. I think Mr. Scannell owes a lot of these people here an apology tonight. I think he disrespected a large portion of our community with his derogatory remarks, especially aimed towards conservatives. I found that when he raised his angry voice tonight, I found that as threatening, and possibly others in this room found it threatening as well. It made me cry. I didn't need to leave with assistance. I'm elderly. I was able to tough it out, you know? So in a republic, we don't allow elected officials to pick and choose the laws we want to follow. The law is the law. So again, I ask, don't change the narrative of what you're doing illegally here that has been temporarily stopped by secretly spying in City Hall on its citizens and make a political case out of this. That is not the case at all. This is about a violation of citizens' rights. Thank you.
Alder Scannell.
You could have been arrested. You behaved in ways that disturbed the process. You said you could have been arrested instead of Ms. Angus?
No. I said any one of us have been illegally recorded here in City Hall.
How do you know that?
Because the recorders are on, we have been in this building without any knowledge that you're secretly recording our conversations. That is a violation of the law, and somehow I don't think you understand.
Security system is unconstitutional.
Now, you're.
Security systems have audio and video. Wow, that's a, what do you mean?
Well, I thought you were smarter than that, Mr. Scannell.
Well, educate me then. I've asked a question.
I'm not even going to answer your foolish question. You know the difference.
No, I don't.
Well, then, I feel really sorry for you.
Security system, this security system is the same as in the police department, the same as within our buses.
Excuse me, I've had enough. I've stated what I wanted to state, and I know I'm not going to win with you. You'll have your opinion.
We're just asking a question. I'm asking you a question. Why can't you answer it?
Well, it's because it's not logical, okay?
Where's the disorderly conduct?
Well, and for the record, there's many conservatives I admire, including Alder Johnson and Liz Cheney and many other conservatives. This isn't politics.
All right, everybody, take it easy. Next up is Rhonda Sitnikow. I know, Rhonda Sitnikow's next.
Haven't been here for a while, so I need a moment. Oh, you got it. My name is Rhonda Sitnikow, and my address is 315 North Greenwood Avenue in Green Bay. And for the record, and to correct the very inaccurate characterization of people who feel strongly about this issue, number one, I believe the 2020 presidential election is valid. I voted for Joe Biden. Number two, I believe that the January 6th insurrection was a huge crap stain on our American history. But I still have a very honest, legitimate, genuine concern for the lack of integrity in the decision-making around the audio surveillance. And because of this, I came to this meeting to speak to the issue because it, I think it's, I've watched the conversations go on on social media. I've read pretty much every media story out there, and there's a huge gap in the story for people like myself who are not vigilantes, who historically vote blue every time, who are very concerned about, I guess, more in fact, the narrative of the safety, right, the safety conversation. It was stated in the beginning of the meeting from the mayor that the sole consideration was safety. But to me, that security defense continues to fall flat without signage from the get-go, right? The audio. right, the audio is rolling, no one knows. The odds of deterring nefarious activity was slim to none. We all know this because when we have security systems in our homes or anywhere else, there's signage. Crumble Cookies has signage, okay? Crumble Cookies. So that's what I keep coming back to, to try to understand all of the logistics around this issue. I have no idea about the threats. I, none of that was put out there, but if those were true, and I sure hope they weren't, I really and truly hope that someone now understands that to deter activity, you need signage. I had someone for uh, a good amount of the time I was serving on the school board who targeted, stalked me and harassed me and eventually ultimately threatened my life. I was very lucky and gifted with a four-year restraining order, which is up in a year and it scares the crap out of me. But one of the very first things that I was told to do when I actually had this order given to me was to put a sign along with a ring camera outside of my front door. And that is exactly what I did. And it, it was explained to me that the reason for that was because when people see signage, they pause, they hesitate.
Ms. Sitnikow?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Can I have twenty more seconds to wrap it up? Okay. And so whatever you decide to do tonight, I think it's important to find out the process of the decision-making that went into play for this, the whole reason we're all here. Right? I think, I would like to hope that there are some regrets that are there and that they'll do better. But I absolutely support and concur with the committee of the whole both points, one and two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, next up is- So we have another citizen attending via Zoom who'd like to speak? One second, sir. We're going to Zoom first. Trying to anyway. Okay. If there's somebody on Zoom, please state your name and address. All right, um, back to the room. We got Richard Perrins is the last person that I have with a name here. And again, just name and address, three minutes.
I know the drill. Richard Perrins, fourteen oh two Kellogg Street, and, uh, I guess the, the main thing I want to say right off the get-go is a mistake was made. So however we decide to repair it, and I think the, the lawsuit will lay down a path to that, uh, the city council needs to follow that and ultimately, the rights of every individual that comes into this building, uh, especially under the guise that they did or did not know that they were being recorded, uh, was wrong. And I'd like to see that corrected. And apart from that, um, I really don't have a whole lot more to say because, uh, the damage has been done. And why we're here tonight is to try to undo that damage. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Uh, and then if, if other folks just want to, please, with the applause, um, if other folks could just, uh, step up to the podium and state your name, name and address if you'd like to speak.
My name is Dave Boyce, one two three South Quincy, Green Bay. Um, I'd like to see a show of hands. How many people in this room have been to the courthouse in legal proceedings, whether to be a witness or whatever, whatever the cause? Let's see a show of hands. How many people have ever been to the courthouse? On the console, two. Okay? How many people realize that they were recording audio when you were there with your lawyers and stuff? That's good because it just didn't happen. And there's a similar situation right here in this building. Uh, we could go in the men's room and keep flushing the toilets so nobody could hear. Or we could go out in the rain and snow. And, uh, if we went far enough, maybe, uh, nobody could overhear us. You know, we, we I, I've been in a, a year in a country where people were paid to kill me and they're all socialists. They were out for my butt, you know, and stuff like that. I, I've been, I spent two years in Tokyo. And, uh, I know what freedom is. I've never been so free as when I was there. And, uh, I had some notes written down, but, uh, I, I think the average citizen uh, is entitled to be, um, to have privacy equity. We've got to have some equity here. Everybody's got to have the same stinking equity. And, and reasonable, uh, belief that the people in this building are doing things they do in our best interest as citizens. I could elaborate. I could go on and on. I could bring up some, some things that were, uh, kind of divisive and all that, but, uh, maybe I gave you enough to think about already. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Um, Lynn Austin, fourteen forty-nine Morrow Street in Green Bay. Um, I don't think I'm an insurrectionist. However, I was blocked from voting and so was my daughter, which I've always tried to be a good citizen and took the time to go vote. But that vote, um, the one that Randy, my alderman, was referring to, um, both Muriel and I were unable to vote. And I didn't make a big stink about it. I just figured, obviously, America is not really the country of freedom that we feel it is. And there were a lot of complaints about that. And hopefully that will never occur again because it was not fair. However, I feel like I talked with a bunch of my customers regarding this issue and everybody had a lot to say. And they were pointing out what this was, was a boundary invasion. And as we would discuss it, they said it's similar to when someone steals something that belongs to you. And our privacy is something that belongs to us. So it was a type of theft. And it was not respectful. And, um, hopefully you guys will make sure that just people are protected that just don't work here, but the rest of us who are stuck having to come down here occasionally to pay our taxes or, um, try to get, you know, things taken care of when we're um, being abused by the city or all those other problems that come up. So, um, please, you'll, you know, you're the ones that I always thought we elected you to represent us, but I didn't really hear that, you know, tonight. And maybe it's because my alderman was, um, you know, upset. However, um, we need somebody to protect us too. I mean, we're the ones that are earning the money, paying our taxes, funding everybody that works here, funding the building, paying the mayor's wages. We are the least respected. So.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Seeing none? Want to close the floor? Maybe Alder Johnson, second- Okay. All right, we will go to Zoom to state your name and address and begin.
Adorf, thirteen twenty-one Emily Street, Green Bay. Um, just like to make a couple of points. Several comments have alluded to a crime having been taken place, uh, as if that's been a decided fact. And we have yet to hear a legal ruling that states that a video and audio recording in a public place is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So it is not, uh, a decided fact that this has been a crime. I agree that signs should be posted, should have been posted. Um, no doubt about that, but, but to call this uh, a crime is, is premature at best. Um, second, I'd like to thank the council members here who have been conversing rationally about this without trying to score political points over each other. Um, I think there's been a good back and forth and some good comments, um, from a lot of the council members. Third, city employees, um, have been invoked several times in this conversation. The city staff members who, um, were talking about their safety and, and feeling secure at their workplace. Um, the question has even been asked by an alder if they've been approached for their feedback on the camera and audio systems. Um, that same alder then, after hearing that we haven't gotten feedback, said she was speaking on behalf of the staff members, even without their feedback. That was confusing to me. Um, and I would really ask the council to please seek that staff feedback before making any changes. Um, these are public employees. I'm a public employee myself. I know that, uh, what I do is, is video recorded all the time. Um, you know, find out if those employees, uh, feel more secure with this system in place before making any changes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom? State your name and address and go. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, this is Eric Drizwiki. I live at, uh, six thirty-two South Roosevelt. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to say I have a lot of love for all you people that are there. Uh, you do a lot of hard work, a lot of tough issues. Uh, I've had drinks or beers with, uh, probably half the alders, uh, before, and I don't think I've ever had a bad situation with Andy, uh, Randy. Hope you still like my Prius. Um, but what I wanted to say is I think what this issue speaks to is that there are a lot of us who we just have concerns about things that are not being done in full transparency. At the end of the day, I don't believe there were ill intents that were going on with this. I, uh, I take issue sometimes when I hear people are supposedly on my side of the aisle that are, you know, painting demon horns on people over things, and that's not the politics I believe in. But I do think that at the end of the day, we could have easily said, my bad. We shouldn't have done it this way. Should have been transparent. I'm sorry. And it's over. And it's just done. And it frustrates me that we, we don't get to those points quickly. It frustrates me that we, we dig in. And digging in like that is just what ruins our communities. It's what gets us into our tribes. And that, that bugs me because I want the business of the city to get done. I, I think that the people that are in this room are all good people. And I don't know why, I don't know why some people want to score points at one end and other people won't want to admit fault because of losing points on the other end. And my hope and prayer is that we can just, we can do better. I believe that we have the capability of doing better. I believe that, uh, the people that are elected, that are in these office seats right now, um, there, you're not incapable. You are good people and you're, you're capable of handling this better. Uh, I, I support, uh, passing this and, and giving the power, uh, to council. Uh, but at the same time, I want to say I'm not, I, I don't believe that there were some sort of demonic or evil intents or any of that baloney. I, I just think it was a poor decision that we should have just apologized for and moved on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom?
Hi, Abby Brzinski, fourteen forty-eight Tenth Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Um, I just wanted to share my appreciation for city employees. Um, I hope you guys take that in consideration when, um, taking up this issue. Um, I feel like our support to staff is really important um, with turnover being as high as it is. Um, I think that we need to support staff as much as we can. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. All right, entertaining motion to close the floor? Motion made by Alder Galvin, signed by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye. Post nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. All right. Does somebody have the floor? Alder Wery?
I'll wait for, there we go. Perfect. Um, where to start? Why, why, why is this such a big deal? I think as we saw tonight, and probably all of us have heard in multiple ways, people are angry. I'm angry. In my twenty years on council, I get to say that. No, I used to say that, but now I get to say it. In my twenty years on council, honestly, this is the most disturbing issue that I've encountered. Hands down. Hands down. And that says a lot with some of the stuff we dealt with previously. I, I will ask whoever wants to answer it, if the purpose of installation was safety, then, then why secretly install them and not put up signs? Isn't signage the whole point of deterring bad actions? Who wants to handle that?
Well, I think, you know, it's something that maybe Alder Scannell-
No, uh, staff.
No, I'm saying, you, you don't want me to answer?
Oh, no. I thought you were referring to Alder Scannell as saying something, but go ahead.
I mean, I know there's been a tradition of interrupting people throughout this meeting, but it'd be great if you'd stop doing that.
I'll try.
Um, Alder Scannell had mentioned the fact that you get into sort of a he said, she said situation, right? So this is a way to protect the integrity of staff who have been attacked with false allegations. That would be one example.
So not putting up signs protects the integrity of employees?
If you're able to confirm whether or not something was said or done, that's helpful.
So to try and prevent bad actors and putting up signage, you didn't do that and somehow hoped it would? Would deflate the situation?
Attorney Bungard is suggesting-
Wise choice to go to her. Okay.
Particular issues are part of the litigation. I would suggest that we talk about that in closed session.
I want an answer. They want an answer.
What is the question?
We already answered.
Why weren't signage, why wasn't, why weren't signs put up?
I understand you want-
If we wanted to stop bad behavior. That's the whole point of it. It's like telling your kids, you know, something not to do, and then they do it afterwards and then you punish them. But not to tell them and punish them, that, that's just weird. That's just strange. I mean, uh, can you see why people are thinking they're being spied on when you're not being told you're being listened to? And I know you're gonna, and Joanne, I appreciate you took time to talk to me last week. I know you're stuck in a tough spot, so when, when tough, tough questions come your way, it's just your role. It's not you.
And I understand that it, it seems like a simple answer. Um, but because of the fact, and, and whether it is or isn't, it, it's subjective, but the point is, at, at this point, we're in litigation. And those are questions that are being raised in the litigation. So clearly, we can't talk about it without potentially impeding the city's defense or impeding the city's litigation strategy. At the end of the day, my duty is to defend the city, and so I, I have to raise that point. I, I can't answer that question in an open session.
Okay, appreciate that. So it could have been an oversight. It could have been just a decision made not to do it. It could have been a big middle finger to everybody. Could have been any of those, or some other ones I didn't think of. Um, is, is the answer the same then if the purpose of installation was safety? Right, safety. So you're thinking PD, Police Department, you know, maybe IT because they have to handle. Why were the mayor and clerk given access if the purpose was safety?
Well, can I say anything or?
Again, specifically, I can't answer that question because it's all related to our, to, to the litigation. I know it's a broken record, but-
I think sometimes that defense is an easy shield to put up when, when all of the community is waiting to hear for an answer. I know I am. We've asked, I asked these questions before there was a lawsuit. I know President Burnett asked these questions before there was a lawsuit. We met with no answers, and then once there was a lawsuit, there was like, oh, we can't talk about it. So we have answers coming. And I know you're going to tell us in closed session. Maybe. You, you don't have to answer. I know you're gonna, you're gonna say the same thing, but I just wanted to point out people deserve and want answers, and we tried to get them. Honest to God. I know President Burnett, you had several emails asking what's going on, what's going on, give me answers, give me answers. And then once the lawsuit hit, oh, no, we wanted to give you answers, but we can't. Now, I know I have an open records request that I hope is still being worked on.
The open records request is being worked on, but for clarity's sake, when this was brought to our attention, it was brought to our attention as to your concerns with- the process, with the signage, the decision-making. There's a whole list of items that staff prepared for, and we had as many answers as we could for Wednesday. The lawsuit was filed right before that. So while that happened on Tuesday, so I just want to clarify the timeline. It's not that staff was trying to avoid questions. We were trying to pull all this information together, again, because this is something that happened two years ago. It takes some time to review all this. Nobody wants to provide half answers. Nobody wants to provide answers that are only 50% complete. So it does take time to put all this information together.
I appreciate that.
And then the circumstances changed when the lawsuit was filed. That's just inevitable. That's just how it works.
Thank you. Now, I can tell you, you know, that some city staff have told me, live in my district or work in the building, they are not happy with it. But they don't want to step up and be any kind of target or the poster child of somebody who's not happy about it. So they're there. Now, Mr. Mayor, can you just apologize here right now to the council, to the public? Can you just apologize and say, whatever reason, oversight, my mistake, I'm bad? Can you apologize?
I mean, you know, hindsight's 20/20, right? We could have communicated more effectively, but we sent out an email to 850-plus individuals in the city of Green Bay that this was happening. So this was not some grand conspiracy, right?
Okay, so I asked you if you wanted to apologize and you're not. No? Okay. And I know emails were sent out, but it wasn't to every city employee. It was only those that you could find an email address for. So there still were another 100 or so who didn't get one. And there were those who were hired after that date for a good year, as was asked at our Park Committee meeting, who also didn't get one. So any new hires who come in, they'll just be bumbling along in the hallway, talking about anything in their private life, and they don't even know. We didn't give them the courtesy of telling them. I have a lot more to say, but you can, there's an anger because it's a right, whether some believe it is or not. That's how you lose it. When people want big government who control a lot, it whittles away its rights until there's nothing left. And somebody has to hold the line. Somebody has to. And goddamn it, I will.
Right. Unless we're talking about...
I will. I don't need your commentary. Thank you. I don't need your commentary.
So just to clarify...
No, I don't need your commentary.
No, I know you don't need it, but you're gonna get it. So just to clarify, this concern doesn't come into play when we're talking about a political adversary of Alderman Weary's, whose privacy he directly invaded.
Point of order.
Alder Galvin?
That's the truth. Thank you. I'd like to point out to the council members here, you're embarrassing us. This back and forth, nitpicking, I'm about ready to do the Joe Moore dumpster fire speech. We're not showing the proper decorum and respect to each other that we all deserve and that the public deserves to see exhibited by us. This constant bickering, snide comments, and other things going on is embarrassing, and I'm ashamed. It needs to stop. The public can act any way they want. We can boot them out if they get out of hand, but at least let's try to respect each other and show each other that respect and expect it in return. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Ek?
Okay, so I wanted to go back to, there was a question that we brought up at the Parks Committee that was answered, but then Alder Galvin asked it again tonight, and he didn't get the full answer. And one of the questions was, who had access to the recordings? And originally, we thought it was all at the Police Department, and they were the ones monitoring it, but we found out that those that had access were the mayor, the clerk, all the city attorneys, in addition to the Police Department. So I just wanted to clarify, that was talked about at the Parks Committee meeting. But I do have a question, and I don't know if I need to ask each person individually, but I would like to know if the mayor has listened to the recording devices, if the attorneys have, and if the clerk has.
I have not.
Okay. And the clerk?
Clerk?
Alder Ek, I was not aware that I had access until last week.
Okay, thank you.
So I did not access any recordings, listen to any recordings, view any recordings, didn't know I had access. Had I known that, I would not have done that because that is not in the purview of my job.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, any of your staff, has any of your staff accessed it?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And the attorneys?
Yes, I'm on the list that has access. I don't believe I've accessed directly. I've viewed footage in relation to records requests and a personnel review, or a personnel issue review, but that's the extent of it. But I haven't accessed it from my computer. I didn't, I wasn't aware that I had direct access either.
Thank you.
Alder Galvin?
Got a little emotional. I forgot I actually had two letters here to read.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
What I have are two letters from City Hall employees. I don't know who they are. They contacted me, and they wanted these read. And I think what they have to say will explain why they don't want to be identified. The first one is, "Good evening, Mayor and Alders. I felt compelled to address you all this evening to highlight an element of this issue which has so far been entirely overlooked in this conversation, employee safety. I have asked Alder Galvin to submit my comments anonymously tonight because, as detailed in this statement, I do fear for my safety, and I am also concerned about people using existing processes to retaliate against me for expressing those fears. I'm asking you all tonight, if you are considering taking away a measure designed to keep us safe, please do not let that be the end of the conversation. Please replace it with something else, or better yet, make safety and security of employees a top priority. I enjoy my job as a public servant, and I feel proud to work for the city of Green Bay. City Hall is a great place to work, but I don't feel 100% safe here. Unfortunately, this is a harsh reality of the world we live in. The tone of public discourse in this country has become more divided and more violent in recent years, and there are far too many days where the thought of something terrible happening at my job crosses my mind. This is especially true when the city of Green Bay is again in the news for one political controversy or another. There have been incidents in this building in which my friends and colleagues have been threatened with physical harm. There have been incidents in this building where people who are emotionally charged show up knocking on the door demanding to speak with someone to have their issue resolved immediately. Recently, a phone call came in where an individual was asking when the next scheduled meeting was to occur where the most people would be in attendance at City Hall. I personally was involved in an incident where a gentleman was upset about being evicted and came to City Hall demanding someone to stop the process. Myself and other staff spent 30 minutes in the hallway with him in an attempt to de-escalate. We thought we were successful until he came back a second time, upset the first suggestions given to him were inadequate. This resulted in, again, in myself and staff being isolated in the hallway with the individual. He left for the second time, and unfortunately, an hour later returned for the third time, where ultimately, law enforcement was called. Throughout my interactions with the person, I couldn't help but think, "Does he have a weapon? Will he attack me? Is anyone watching? Can anyone hear me if I call for help?" Recent de-escalation training taught to us to read body language and provide tips on the best way to communicate with someone who is visibly upset or even shut down. Active shooter training has been provided for City Hall employees because, again, that is the unfortunate reality of our world today. My young child recently started school. Within the first month, my child came home to tell me he went over hiding spots in his classroom in case a stranger enters his school. That was not a conversation I ever thought I would have with my child, but it surely was a reality check. The same applies here at City Hall. I have coworkers who keep items in their office for safety, such as tools to break their windows, ladders to help escape out a window, a stop bar that can be applied to a door for barrier protection, and first aid kits with tourniquets. I share these examples because they have nothing to do with politics and everything to do with employee safety, something I know our mayor cares deeply about. I urge the council to take whatever measures you believe will keep the employees of this building the safest. Please do not let partisan vitriol and political gamesmanship take priority over our safety and our lives. Thank you. This is the second letter. As you discuss audio and video monitoring measures at City Hall, please make sure you are thinking of staff and public safety. Every citizen has a right to express their frustrations, and staff are aware that it is part of the job as a public servant. It seems that people forget that City Hall employees are also tax-paying citizens with families and friends, and we should feel safe at work. Staff encounter people who are elevated on the phone by mail and in person. Citizens come to City Hall who have a decreased ability to control their behaviors for a host of reasons, including but not limited to drug and alcohol addictions and/or mental illness. Some people have displayed physically aggressive, inappropriate, or impulsive behaviors in the halls and directly towards staff. As council, it would be neglectful to not have serious discussions about safety and the role of video/audio equipment as part of that solution. Developing a collaborative policy would be more appropriate than removing the only safety net currently in place. A security policy would send a message to staff and the public that we have the ability to respond to elevated situations and will do what is right to protect all people within And then I have some comments. We talked about signs. How many times do you see signs telling people there's alarm systems, there's cameras, and yet crimes occur? I don't know if signs would necessarily sell one that's intent on bad behavior from committing that bad behavior anyway. But at least when it comes time to punish that person and make them pay for those crimes, having the evidence available to the Police Department would be ideal. I'm an officer. I served 34 years for the city of Green Bay. I had my life threatened. I had my family's life threatened. I worked with an officer who had someone fire a shotgun through his house one day and almost hit his child sleeping in bed. I know how these employees feel, and yet I don't, because at least I had the ability to react. And for the public to tell us that the employees have a Second Amendment right to defend themselves is not the kind of world I think a lot of us want to live in, where everyone has to go around armed with a gun to ensure their own safety. And I think these employees don't expect that. They expect their lives to be safe and secure when they're working here. I'm not sure on the issue of whether it's legal or not legal. I'm not a lawyer. All right? I was a cop. I knew about disorderly conduct, speeding, and other laws like that, and even then, I still had to refresh myself by studying the statutes. As to whether this is a violation of the constitutional rights, I don't know. And that's why I'm willing to wait until the court system adjudicates this. Now, we have a temporary restraining order in place. I think that should reassure people that they're not being audio-recorded. They're still being video-recorded. But again, when we have these incidents, like it was referred to before, there's nothing a cop wants to have to deal with than a he-said, she-said incident, because you can't make a decision. And then the perpetrator is allowed to walk away free. And I think we need to consider that. How do we protect our employees? Do we spend $100,000? It's gonna cost more than that to hire a police officer just to sit in City Hall to make sure people respect everyone else and obey the laws. So I don't see that as a real viable solution. I don't see this council voting on that kind of money. But we have to work together, and instead of poking each other in the eye and doing theatrical displays, trying to score points, I think we need to work towards a solution that makes the employees in this building and the public that comes in this building to feel safe and secure, to be able to voice their opinions. How awful is that, that in this country, I've got employees in this building that are afraid to put their name on a piece of paper because of the reaction of the public and the harassment and the threats that they're gonna experience? And there have been threats made to employees in this building, threats for physical violence. And I just, I can't believe that we allow that to happen to our employees without taking some kind of action. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alders Ek, Weary, and Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. So in hearing different incidences, what I'd like to know is, were the police called? They're very close by. Were they ever called in these incidents? If people were feeling threatened, is there some kind of police report that was made? Does anybody know that?
Captain Warwick?
Yes, there were.
Okay. So the police arrived at City Hall in these incidences? When they were called?
But you had a couple of questions there, I think.
I did. I said, is there a police report? Were the police called and they came in these different incidences?
Those are different questions, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Right, okay. So the police were called and they came to City Hall for each of these incidences?
Which incidences are you referring to?
Well, it sounds like there's more than the three that originally were talked about as the reasons for putting in the listening devices, so I guess I'll stick to those.
Alder Galvin?
Yes.
The Police Department has the ability to check calls for service. Here, it would probably take them about a day to put together calls for service that related to threats or disturbances or things like that, and then we'd have a better idea of exactly what we're talking about.
Okay. I just, I know they're close by, so we have that option.
Alder Ek?
Yes.
I would also suggest that just because the station is three blocks down there, there are times when there's literally no police downtown.
Okay, thank you.
So the response time...
If there was something that, you know, measures were taken to stop the incidences where people felt unsafe. And I do have a second question, and I don't know, I was looking through the different documents, and I thought I read somewhere where the cameras themselves have a low-quality audio capability, so the cameras themselves, is that true?
Yes.
The camera does have a possibility of recording, listening, or listening device?
They're not highly sensitive, is how they've been characterized, which is accurate.
Okay. All right. So I did see it. I knew I saw it somewhere.
Not highly sensitive.
Okay. But I'm, okay, I'm asking about the cameras. I did say the cameras.
Just to clarify, the cameras themselves don't have audio. We had to install separate microphones to pick up audio.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying, because that's what I was asking. I thought I read somewhere where the camera themselves, not the listening device, but the camera, had some kind of low-quality audio ability. So that is not the case? Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Weary, and then Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Yeah, obviously, threats to employees are to be addressed seriously. Everybody here would agree on that. You know, bring that to the council. Be glad to look into solutions and put anything we can, other than violating constitutional rights. We'd be willing to work on that, yes. And Alder Galvin, I can assure you, there's nothing theatrical about my comments. It's all pure natural there. Fourth Amendment rights, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." That's a Fourth Amendment. And in Wisconsin, we're a one-party consent state, right? That means an individual can record another one without them knowing. That does not mean a third party can record others who do not know. That is a violation. Now, on the Congress, I read this at a committee, congress.gov website, the Supreme Court has comments on this, on the CATS and reasonable expectation of privacy tests in the Library of Congress. The test the court propounded in CATS v. United States examined the expectation of privacy upon which one may justifiably rely. The Supreme Court stated, "What a person knowingly exposes to the public, even in his own home or office, is not subject to Fourth Amendment protection. But what he seeks to preserve as private, even in an area accessible to the public, may be constitutionally protected." So not, just because you're not in City Hall doesn't mean everything you say is just open to anybody to hear. The capacity to claim the protection of the amendment depends not on a property right in the invaded space, but upon whether the area was one in which there is reasonable expectation of freedom from government intrusion. The court usually considers whether a person is taking normal precautions to main privacy, that is precautions customarily taken by those seeking to exclude others, to be significant when determining legitimacy of expectation. Justice Potter Stewart concluded, "Wherever a man may be, he is entitled to know that he will be free." Now, the American Bar Association has a few comments that were interesting. "This concern for privacy even in public places is echoed by our current Chief Justice, This concern for privacy even in public places is echoed by our current Chief Justice John Roberts, who wrote, quote, "A person does not surrender all Fourth Amendment protection by venturing into the public sphere. To the contrary, what one seeks to preserve as private, even in an area accessible to the public, may be constitutionally protected." Chief Justice Roberts also noted, as Justice Brandis explained in his famous 1928 dissent, "The court is obligated, as subtler and more far-reaching means of invading privacy have become available to the government, to ensure that the progress of science, science, does not erode Fourth Amendment protections. Here, the progress of science has afforded law enforcement a powerful new tool to carry out its important responsibilities. At the same time, this tool risks government encroachment on the sort the framers, after consulting the lessons of history, drafted the Fourth Amendment to protect." So I would just remind us here, there are important, it sounds like, safety issues that we need to address, and I wish we had brought, been brought in earlier, because I would have loved to have had those discussions to do that, but not at the cost of our constitutional rights, not at that cost. And that's not dramatics. That is, like I said, natural. Thank you.
Alder Brunet?
Thank you, Mayor. I had spoken quite a bit at the Parks Committee, asked a lot of questions, so I'm not going to be redundant, but I do have a few questions and points to make. What's most frustrating to me is this idea of safety of employees. Of course, we all want to ensure the safety of employees. That is without a doubt. I did have a constituent who had reached out to me with some concerns around in-person early voting, absentee voting, and I am in a very good relationship with the police department, so I went with, to the police chief or perhaps even Commander Warwick, just talking about safety. So I was aware of some, I shouldn't say anecdotal, because that was a very real situation, but I was not aware of the issues, perhaps to the depth that we're being told that they are currently being felt by city employees, because I do ask some city employees, and there are concerns, like any public place, any bank, any retail store, any area where you have heightened tensions as a society, you are going to come across hostile and angry people. Perhaps we need to protect our staff, but what is so frustrating to me is that there has been at least one, possibly two, budget cycles where we were not told that safety of employees was a concern of the administration, because if we had been told that, we probably would have found ways to budget money to make this building more secure. So that's why I'm getting frustrated with this defense of what was for employee safety. If that was the case, then we should have known about it. A year ago, and then a few months ago, we were talking about a hundred and hundred thousand dollars for rebranding. We could have put a hundred thousand dollars to protect the safety of the employees in this building. So I'm not saying that our employees aren't feeling safe, but the administration's way of protecting them is putting audio surveillance without notifying the public. I talk about these things to my children, and they have an alderman for a dad, so they get the soapbox and they watch meetings and they hear me rant and rave about certain things. But even my eleven-year-old son, when we were talking about this, he said, "Daddy, how did people know to behave better if they didn't know they were being recorded?" I mean, it doesn't pass the logic of an eleven-year-old, but yet we're holding on to that. If we would have noticed and had signs in City Hall, people would have been behaving because they knew that there'd be audio and video surveillance of their illegal act. I do have a question, because Commander Warwick had mentioned judicial oversight, and this is the thing that I'm really struggling with the most in regards to the Fourth Amendment. When it comes to the audio and the video that's captured by these devices, Commander Warwick, as a police officer, could you initiate or use that unwarranted or unnoticed audio surveillance as justification to charge someone with a crime?
Well, there would have to be a crime for us to go looking for it, or an incident to investigate it.
Okay. So if somebody, and again, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. So you mentioned judicial oversight. So if someone commits a crime at City Hall, would that audio surveillance that up until a month ago was not noticed, would a judge allow that in the courtroom as evidence against the person who committed the act if they didn't know they were being video/audio recorded?
I can't speak for the judge. I don't know. I can tell you from a police officer's perspective that it is their duty to collect all exculpatory evidence for both sides of that disturbance. And when I say that, any evidence, including video, witness statements, a canvas of people in and around that area where the incident occurred, is all included in that, and then that is what's presented to the judge to determine whether that's allowed in the prosecution of that incident.
Would you, though, as a police officer, would you feel comfortable putting into the record or in the court hearing, court case, audio that was collected that was not noticed?
What do you mean by...
At City Hall. For example, if there is an incident at City Hall, and you, there was a crime that was committed, and you're trying to create a case against that person that committed the crime, and you are aware of audio recordings that the person who committed the crime was not aware of, would you feel comfortable bringing that to a court of law as evidence of that illegal act?
Yes, because I have a duty to provide all evidence of that incident to the court.
Okay. Thank you. That answered the question, because that, for me, was a big part. Now, on the other end of that, judges could rule that evidence is not admissible if they feel that it was collected without a warrant.
Correct.
So, for example, if you're going to collect, if you're going to create a case against someone, like drug trafficking, some sort of horrible crime, you know, human trafficking, things of that nature, you would have to go to a judge to get a warrant to wiretap a phone line or to conduct some sort of surveillance or search warrant, would you not?
There's a lot to unpack there, but in a roundabout way, yes.
Okay. Thank you. You mentioned judicial oversight. I just wanted to understand it from a police officer's perspective. It's a real shame, you know, as our community, many of us who are in these seats, we do this because we love our community. We love all of our community. We love the liberals, we love the conservatives, we love the Republicans, we love the Democrats. Local government used to be about serving, used to be neighbors serving neighbors. Randy, you're shaking your head, but I got to tell you, man, I love you, but you're one of the most partisan, you're calling out the partisanship on the far fringe of the other side, but you yourself...
Alder Brunet, just direct your comments to the chair.
Well, the point is that the most politically motivated people through political parties are the ones that are calling out the actions of the other fringe, and we got to get past that as a society, because we can't be at each other's throats all the time. We can't look at government services, the progressive agenda versus the conservative, and on and on. We can talk about policies, and we can talk about how we're going to pick up garbage and make parks safer, but when these partisan political party agendas get thrust into local government, this is the result. It's literally neighbors at each other's throats about things that we should not be talking about. If we're real about even the incidences that happened at City Hall, as horrible and unjustified as they were, the actions of some members of the public who are doing horrible things and treating our staff very poorly, it all goes back to some of these election issues that we have been struggling with from the beginning. Randy, we have had issues with our elections.
Alder Brunet, just direct your comments to the chair.
Ma, do you have a question? Because you're shaking your head.
Alder Brunet, direct your comments to the chair.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. This all goes back to some of the issues that we have had, and we're trying to get past it, but just within the last couple, like election or two ago, there were observers that wanted to observe our election activity, and the clerk or the law department, whoever, kind of had them removed, and they had to go to court to get the city to have the court overturn the city's actions. That frustrates people, and that's justified. We have to get a hold of this stuff, and we have to be realistic about some of the things that city government has done the last few years to create this level of mistrust. It's not excusing poor behavior, boorish behavior, violent, verbally abusive language, that should never be tolerated, but if it's truly safety, why didn't we have that discussion? Why didn't we talk about that and look at the better ways of securing our building than putting up audio devices without publicly noticing them? Thank you.
Alder Campbell and then Alder Scannell.
Mr. Mayor and fellow counsel members, first of all, I want to straighten out a few things. One of the biggest ones, I think, for the public to understand that seems to be thrown around back and forth is, first of all, I'm going to clear the ground as far as what people think of me. I only found out about the recording one week in our Parks Committee, when it wasn't even to the Parks Committee yet, in the following council. So Wednesday to Tuesday, that's when I found out. I didn't know if it was fact. I found it in an elevator, and someone I was riding with said, "Shh, maybe I heard." So I didn't know for sure. That was the first I heard of it. This insinuation that this is a political thing and a move, I want to clear the air. Now, while I ran for office, I actually got three people that didn't agree with the election cycle that went on, and they stepped up as citizens, went through the training, and were down at City Hall at several different polling locations. They got involved. That's what I'm trying to do in my own district, is get people involved, because that's ownership, and ownership of the city, and because they care. The fact that they vote is because they care. They elect us, okay? Again, I've said this before, we have five new alders here. A lot of people are sick and tired of it, and I think this is, this is coming to a hilt here. So, you know, I just want to, I'm frustrated. I have a few more facts here. Mr. Galvin, I just want, hopefully, that straightens out, and some other alders here. That's when I found out, okay? So if you want to point to me that, wow, I must have one heck of an imagination then, okay? Now, I have spoken to people that were down here, that were present when stuff happened, and it only shows that they cared. Now, I'm going to compare this, incidents that we keep going over and over on, that, number one, this wasn't proven in a court of law yet, so we can't speculate, just as if we can't speculate against a lawsuit, against the city, against the mayor, okay? So this thing about getting points and everything is not that. God, I'd be rich if I could. So my biggest problem here is, you know, Mr. Mayor, when I interviewed here and you put me on committee, I was pretty well-honest with you, twenty-minute conversation with the hour. I gave you everything I had, everything I was made of. You've totally betrayed everything that makes up my soul, and it frustrates me. You've betrayed my trust, you've neglected my honor. I quit a job and started my own because I couldn't work for the president of the company anymore, because, but you know what? I gave it my best shot to figure out whether I was, I could walk out that door and keep my head on high, saying, "I gave it my best shot." Now, I don't give up. I decided that I would never work for someone, but I took that, and I explained this to some people, and all this frustration, because I'm just that mad about it, and it starts with you. I think we have a problem. We try to get facts, but they're blocked because we have an executive branch that I think made a mistake. We're the legislative branch, but we're stuck in the middle. We're a broken branch on the tree that never hits the ground. We're trying to give answers to our citizen. We're trying to ask. We keep getting blocked by all this public stuff, but my problem is with the total distrust, the fact that I can't get answers. I don't blame them. I blame you. And it's just the frustration of lack of leadership. You denied my trust for you. I'd like to, I'd like to think, if we're still working together here in the next year, that we could build that back, and if we don't, I have to do it all over again. So I'm just trying to do my job and give the best answers I can to the citizens and do my job. Thank you.
Alder Scannell?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. And security footage from businesses ever been used in a court for prosecution?
Yes.
Did those people know they were being recorded by a ringtone or a security camera or listening device?
There's an, I mean, that's a situational answer, meaning dependent on what's in front of it. Not everybody in that, it is safe to say, not everybody in that video would know that they are being recorded.
Okay. So that's not a violation of the Fourth Amendment. There's a lot of hot air about the Fourth Amendment, "Ooh, going to stand up." Oh, but before I go there, I want to make it clear, I am not playing partisan politics. I, I am talking about facts. Before the 2020 election, there was never this intense scrutiny, problems, people following cars around and inserting themselves into this election process. That never happened. We never needed police during elections at City Hall before 2020. That's a fact. All I'm doing is pointing out facts. I'm not playing one side or the other. I don't care. If it was the other side, I'd be pointing out a fact at that. That's all I am doing. That doesn't make me playing politics if I'm pointing out what's going on. So I have no interest in playing, I've never played politics from this seat. The ringtone, and then the Fourth Amendment. We'll see what the judge says, but as I stated earlier, to just assume we're breaking the Fourth Amendment, which seems like a lot of alders are doing, that's wrong. We got to see what the judge says first, and as far as I can tell, we have not violated the, if this security system violated the Fourth Amendment, then every security system violates the Fourth Amendment. I don't know how you can get around that. You can poo-poo me all you want, I chose those words specifically, so I could say poo-poo, but if you are going to take the stand that, "Oh, this is a huge violation," well, then that's true of every security system, because that's what this is. Now, I can understand being KO'd about not being included in sooner, not, you know, breakdowns in communication. I mean, until this all hit the fan, the police station didn't have signage. 2020 is easy to see, "Oh, yeah, we should have done this much sooner." Staff is busy. They're working. It's a process. Were mistakes made, because things had been done better? Sure, that's always true, but to take that and blow it up, I think is a gross exaggeration. I think this is a huge mistake that we take this action tonight until we find out more about the security needs of this building and the verbal assaults made in this building, which is why audio was put in. That's the evidence you need. Audio, video ain't going to cut it. So let's refer this to protection and policy? Table it? I don't care. We shouldn't act on this tonight until we know what the security needs are in this building, and it might need audio. We don't know that for sure. Decision was made that it was, so I kind of trust it myself. I'm not that suspicious, but perhaps we deliberate it, we decide otherwise, now that we have, we're going to have that authority, apparently. But to act on it now, especially since there's no need, since it's already disconnected, until we get more information, I think it's a mistake to come down hard and say, "No, this is a Fourth Amendment violation," when we don't know that, we can't act on that as if that's true. We don't know. There's a lot we don't know. Let's find out before we act. Thank you.
Alder Grant?
I just want to make a few things clear about our staff's safety. That is very important to myself, and Alder Stevens and I have actually met with HR a couple of times now, looking into retention and where the issues are within our employees. So I do want to make that clear, and I have been commented numerous times by staff, and if their perspective is different, it's not fair to discredit it or say that it's incorrect, and it is opposing to other ones. Everybody's going to have an opinion on that. So I do think it's fair that we recognize all of that perspective. And just one thing, Attorney Bungert, you mentioned two years ago, ultimately it was December of 2021, so we're looking at about a year and three months ago. so we're looking at about a year and three months ago. Okay, sorry, just timeline has been very important to this, so when you said two years, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Sure. The incident started about two years, so, but the installation happened.
Thank you.
All right, we've been at this three and a half hours. Any other comments? Alder Morgan?
I just got a question, I guess for police, because they're the only ones that do see this.
Can you just, um, Mike?
I'm sorry.
Let's go.
Is there someone actually monitoring this? We're talking safety. No one really looks at this unless there's been a report of a problem. So as far as the safety aspect for our employees and stuff like that, but you can't use safety as a reason why we should vote yes or no for this.
Just, just one sec. Commander Ward.
The shift commander who's at the station has this on the live feed, and there are screens in the shift commander's office that have the ability, and if there are people, and I say if there are supervisors in there, they have the ability to monitor this when they're in there.
Do you feel they actually are paying attention to it a lot? I mean, that'd be an opinion, I know.
Yeah, it, it, that's an opinion. I mean, I can tell you when I was a shift commander, I mean, it, it, it is something that you glance at frequently. I mean, there's, if, if you're picturing, picture three big screens in front of you. I mean, there's a lot of camera views because there's a lot of cameras throughout the city, not only in, in the buildings but intersections, and if those cameras are up, they would look at it. I can tell you that I've given direction, you know, because I do can, my oversight is the operations side, that they do have those cameras up and do look at it. I mean, I, I've asked them to look at it, I don't know if they do. But there is a good attempt on our part to watch those cameras, but I do preface it, but I do preface it by saying that the supervisors have to be in the shift commander's office to view it.
If the shift commander is in his office doing something else or he gets called out to a major incident, is there someone else that monitors it?
No.
Okay. Just have to say, yes, we need to worry about our employees, but I don't feel this is something that's going to, we have to find better ideas for our, protection of our citizens and our employees than these cameras, which are somewhat hard to watch anyway. You're not getting a perfect sight of what's going on.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hodgson?
I have a question. Are we on M1?
Yes.
Okay. It's been long. Is this even valid since, if I read M1, it's to direct staff to create a policy to remove all audio recording systems at City Hall, to amend any ordinances necessary to effectuate the policy, and to destroy all audio recordings after the litigation matter has been resolved. So I guess it is pertinent with regard to the word destroy all audio recordings after litigation matter has been resolved. But, but the recording systems are down, right? The audio. So we're really on M1, it's really the destroy all audio recordings after litigation matter has been resolved. I guess that's the pertinent thing left in this item. Okay. I just want clarification.
Maybe Attorney Bungert, do you want to just clarify that?
Yes, so we, we have brought a draft at the direction of, of committee staff did, include a draft in council's packet that addresses that. So the policy itself provides that the use of audio recording equipment is prohibited, and any existing devices will be removed. I believe the, the TRO and the order from the, from Judge Hammer was for them, for the recording to be stopped. It didn't necessarily go as far as saying that the devices needed to be removed. So this is going a little bit further, and it, it obviously clarifies exactly what type of audio recording device is, and then it does have a caveat in there that adds to existing recordings. So it goes a little bit further than the court order.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess I have a question then. If a police officer walks into the City Hall and they have recording equipment, are they going to be required to take that off if we pass this? Because that's audio recording equipment, it's city-owned. They're walking into the City Hall, so would that have to be done?
Right, so we.
No. What's, what's the point of order?
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm looking at the policy itself, and it, it actually says in two B that it's, it's not, excuse me. This policy does not supersede any policy of the Green Bay Police Department, nor limit the use of any device governed by any such policy, such as officer-worn body camera. So that's why I'm saying a point of order, because he's asking, but it's laid out in the policy.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Alder.
You're welcome.
Okay, so a yea vote would basically uphold this draft policy? That's been in the packet?
Wait, say that one more time, I'm sorry.
A, a vote for this item?
Yes.
Would uphold that draft policy?
Correct, yes. So approving, essentially, you would need to do a motion to approve the, the draft policy that has, has to be part of the motion. But yes, it could approve this draft.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes.
Alder Galvin.
Your Honor, Attorney Bungert, I'm looking at M1 versus, what is it, L2? Okay? And I'm just wondering, are we saying the same thing in both? Do we need to have both? Does one supersede the other one? Or does one kind of wash out the other one and we don't need it anyway, or?
You mean the difference between the ordinance and the policy?
Yeah.
So the ordinance is giving you authority to enact the policy because day-to-day operations are not within the purview of, day-to-day operations are granted to the chief executive, not to council. So the ordinance amendment brings that back under your purview, and then you're adopting the policy pursuant to the authority that's granted in the ordinance amendment, which is why the policy would have to be approved contingent on adoption of the, of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? Alder Weary.
Don't sound so enthused. It's actually more of a clarification. Attorney Bungert, is the motion on the floor, does it accomplish that? It sounded like you said we had to actually change the verbiage in order to enact that.
The, the policy draft just presented by staff, contingent on.
Is that on the floor right now, or do we need to change? I think we just had a.
This is a motion to approve.
Okay, well, I, I will, because I think, I either proved it or was handled. Scan, I would amend it to read as stated by Attorney.
Draft policy on adoption of ordinance.
Pass the ordinance to get the policy. That's basically what it is.
Ordinance. General Ordinance 06-23.
Madam, I'm in. Okay. Alder Weary makes a motion, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor? Signify by the seat. Board vote has been requested. Ten to two. All right, now we're. Is that officially an amendment, so, right? Just accept that as the original motion. No, I think you're right. I'm okay moving on without it. Was that an amendment? Attorney Bungert?
It was an amendment, yes, because I think the motion on the floor was to approve the item, and the item was referring it to staff.
Okay.
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended by Alder Johnson, seconded by who? Alder Weary. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Basically the same vote. Procedure.
Okay. You want to vote?
Nine to three. All right, on to L1, litigation update regarding Wisconsin State Senate at all versus City of Green Bay. To go into closed session? You're making a motion. Alder Johnson makes a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Scannell, Alder Johnson, you got the language?
And then I assume, it sounds like there's probably some folks that want to even debate the motion.
Okay.
I'll read the language. The committee may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Section 1, subsection G, Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is, or is likely to become involved, the committee will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection 2, Wisconsin statute, take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the agenda. Mayor, if I have the floor, I would just say, I, I support closed session. This is legal stuff, guys. We, we already took up all the other stuff. We had plenty of open forum for that. This is legal stuff, we're still in a lawsuit. We've got to be sensitive to that, we've got to mitigate our risk.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you. On, on the motion, I think I can get along, go along with this. I do have some questions because, keep in mind, the public is watching. The public wants to know what we're going in closed session to discuss, so I, I'm not going to ask anything that we're going to be discussing in closed session necessarily, but if Attorney Bungert could kind of answer this question. If we go into closed session, I like to think as a government body, the council as a whole, including the mayor, the common council, has the authority to kind of set the, this, the, this, make decisions or set the agenda as to what our legal strategy is. Does the authority to move forward lie with the council as a whole or with the mayor, the administration, and outside council?
So that's a fairly complex question. Generally, the city attorney is vested with the authority to transact all legal business on behalf of the city, defend all city officers, including the municipal corporation, which is the city. Council is obviously the governing body for the city, so if council had a directive that it wanted to see, in theory, it would, it would have that ability. But how that would, it's, how that would interplay with the fact that I'm, I and outside council are tasked with defending the mayor in his official capacity and tasked with defending the city, it's not a simple answer. So it, it kind of depends on, on, you know, the directive that council wants to take. So that's something that we could definitely look into to get an answer, but it's not a black and white answer.
All right, I can appreciate that. So, so there, there'll be an action item that we can entertain. Like the council will be able to dictate an action to proceed as we see fit. Would that be a true statement?
The agenda item isn't slated for action. It's just an informational update, a litigation update. There's nothing that's being presented to council to take action on at this point. It's essentially a litigation update from our outside council, giving a summary of what has transpired thus far and kind of what the future holds, and, and to answer any of your questions with respect to the litigation and any legal, legal questions that you have.
So the mayor.
At this point, there's nothing that's being brought to, to council for action.
So that's, you know, quite frankly, that's, that's concerning because, you know, as a government body, we, we may disagree with some of the actions. We didn't have much say in what has led to this point. And, you know, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but in different lawsuits that we have discussed, the council had some ability to influence the decisions that were being made, the actions going forward. Like I, let me just ask this one, kind of a clarifying point. The mayor is entitled to a defense, just like as individual council members or the council as a whole. If we do something that causes a lawsuit to be initiated, we are deserving a defense. So I don't want to deny the mayor a legal defense. He, he, he's, he's duty, it's our duty to ensure that that happens. My point, though, the other part is that the city as an entity is being sued. You know, as an entity, there were decisions that were made, even like decisions to ignore the lawsuit threat and just kind of proceed with keeping the audio in place that has kind of led to a lawsuit. So my concern is if you're saying that we're just going to go, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm really trying not to do that, but if we're just going to go and close doors, hidden from the public, and then just come out and just say, hey, this is the action that the city's taking, council, you have no say in that? That's where I think the public would be very alarmed to hear. Can you clarify that?
No, Alder, I'm not saying you don't have any say in it. I'm just saying, what I'm trying to explain is that there isn't any directive or anything placed in front of council to act on at this time. That wasn't the intent of the, of the item, of the committee, of the whole item. And frankly, committee of the whole specifically doesn't have the full authority of, of council. There would have to be a secondary element that, that would need to be implemented in order. So when council meets as committee of the whole, it's meeting with the powers of committee, not necessarily with the powers of, of council conferred upon it. But that's kind of beside the point. And I lost my train of thought. I'm not saying you can't take any action, I'm just saying there's nothing in front of you to take action on at this time.
I understand, thank you. You explained the committee, the whole part, I'm just saying.
And to clarify as to past, past practice with respect to litigation, my understanding is, yes, council does get apprised of certain recommendations that staff has with respect to resolving suits, but I am not aware of a practice where the city attorney's office has sought approval from council with respect to pleadings, with respect to answers, with respect to discovery requests, with respect to any of the litigation strategy and, and the normal course of business of litigation. Staff, namely me, will bring a summary of where, you know, what has transpired with, with some litigation, and then will bring a legal analysis and a recommendation as to what my recommendation is with the suit or with a settlement amount, and will request approval of, of a settlement and a settlement amount because the, the purse strings are within the purview of council. But as far as management of litigation, that is not something that has ever come before council.
Okay. One other question, and then I'll, I'll be quiet for now. In regards to how the attorneys were chosen, I know you had talked about this at Finance Committee. When a lawsuit is initiated against the city, our insurance company kind of dictates the action moving forward, like you have to pick attorneys to defend the city to limit financial exposure. And we chose two attorneys, again, no council oversight. I'm not saying perhaps we, we needed to vote on those appointment, appointed attorneys, but how many, like, the, the manager, the, the insurance company, do they say you have to pick these two? Or did they give a list of like 10 or 20 attorneys and that the city administration can pick what attorneys to represent?
Sure, so our, our insurer, so typical process is whenever we are sued, we tender the suit to CivMIC, our insurance company, to determine whether they would, will provide coverage. They gave a determination of coverage, subject to reservation of rights, which is fairly standard, particularly in a declaratory judgment action. And then they have a list of approved attorneys that they work with for certain matters. Certain ones are more, more skilled in, in certain areas of the law. The attorneys that were recommended to us from Stafford Rosenbaum were, were recommended by CivMIC as the ones that would be best suited for this particular type of municipal litigation as they have extensive experience in it.
Zeroing in on the question, though, did, did they just recommend two or did they recommend five or 10 and we pick?
My understanding is they just recommended. My understanding is they just recommended attorneys Waskowski and Engelke from Stafford Rosenbaum.
Okay. Alright, thank you, attorney.
Alder Weary?
And I'm paraphrasing perhaps, but Attorney Bungert, you did state the governing body is the city council.
The legislative body, yes, and the governing body, to certain extents, yes.
And I can tell you, I'm going to use that term again. In my 20 years, we have given direction countless times at the beginning of lawsuits, especially big ones like this, and I know that was before your time, but I'd like to think those attorneys were also correct that they consulted with us for direction. They would come in and say, hey, here's the issue. Which way do you want to go? How do you want to do this? And give us all the ups and downs. So, it, quite frankly, did even catch me by surprise tonight, and I usually read these pretty carefully. I didn't know there wasn't an action item on here. It's just an update. So, we're just going to go in there, you're going to tell us what you're going to do, we're going to come out and say, well, we can't do anything. Why isn't an action item on here? Was that purposeful? Is it a clever end around?
No, it's not, Alder. There isn't an action item, because frankly, there's nothing really to do at this point, and that's, that's, we're defending an action, but there's nothing pertinent that the council has to decide on right now, and there's lots of different-
How about if we want to defend it, or how we want to defend it?
You can give us referrals, and you can certainly give direction, and then we can, we can review that. And again, we also have to consult, depending on what that action is, that is, and what that direction is, we may have additional things that we have to review and consult with, you know, particularly with CivMCC, our insurer, as they are leading the defense under our policy. So, there's no action item, because there's no, there's no recommendation on anything to do at this point. But if council has wishes, and council has directives, and they want to vote on that as a majority body, that's something that we will listen to and take, take forward. But there's nothing that staff is bringing to you.
So, there will be no action by yourself or special counsel on this lawsuit for the next two weeks, until we meet again?
We don't have anything at this time to bring to you. If we had something that we needed, we would bring it to you.
So, if council voted in closed session, open session, whatever, to direct you to do something different than maybe the mayor wanted, would you be adversely affected, and we would bring on our own attorney?
If there's a conflict where there are two opposing, where council and the mayor, or any of the alders and the mayor, any of the entities that make up the city are adverse to each other, yes, we're going to have to have a discussion about having outside, or a separate council, correct?
Alright, I appreciate it.
But that's not something we can determine right at this outset. We're going to have to have additional conversations.
I want that to be out there, that that could be an option.
Yes, if I'm conflicted out, yes. I can't represent as much as I'd like to. I can't represent everybody if everybody is opposing each other.
We need two of you.
That would make my life a lot easier.
Thank you, Your Honor. Attorney Bungert.
Yes.
Long night.
Quite.
Alright.
Not the longest we've had, but getting there.
We're pushing it. It's not over. And we've all got bets on closing time.
Yep.
Okay, so, the city has been sued how many times this past year?
This past year?
Twenty twenty-two.
I can't.
Hundred?
No.
Fifty?
What? No.
Twenty-five?
A lot. Tens, tens and tens, and yes, yes. Not even counting all the claims that are filed, because those technically are suits, correct?
Could also be a suit, correct?
Suits prior to circuit court, yes.
And the most we're looking at here?
Yes.
Cost to the taxpayers, as we discussed at Finance, was $250,000.
At most, yes.
That's at the most.
And that's, that's very extended protracted litigation, yes.
In your nine years here, have we had any other suits where we were looking at more than $250,000?
Yeah. I believe the excessive force in 1983 action in the Jonathan Tubby matter, and the Oneida Seven Gens litigation, those were the two big ones that I can recall, just off the top of my head.
Okay. Now, I remember Seven Gens. We did discuss that behind closed doors. Jonathan Tubby, I don't remember you coming to us to see if there was anything-
No, I think, I didn't give any updates on that. Neither did my predecessor, as we didn't, we prevailed in that one, so we never had any settlement.
Okay. So, when this suit is filed, although the mayor's named, it's really the city that's on the hook.
Correct, because the insurer also covers the mayor, and the city pays for the mayor's defense, and pays for its own defense, and pays for everyone's defense.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, and they name him, but they all know they're going for the deep pockets, which is the city.
Yes, yes. Based on liability, yeah, reasons, yes.
So, immediately, we go to our CivMCC, and they start, they run the show from there. If they're going to be on the hook-
Yes.
They're the ones that are telling us, we think this is the best person to get the job done, because CivMCC doesn't want to pay out. So, they're going to do everything in their power to make sure the city prevails.
Correct. That's their, because-
That's, they don't want to lose money. They're there to make money. God bless America. Yes, absolutely.
It's their money as well, yes. That's how insurance works.
Alright, thank you very much.
Sure.
Alright, we ready?
Just one thing. Alder Johnson?
Just a reminder, as we take the vote on closed session, that if we were to, we waive our privilege to have these discussions in the future. So, just, it can completely derail our legal strategy and protect taxpayers of the city. So, I just want to remind folks of that. I appreciate Alder Weary's point, that there's a whole nother slew of questioning that can occur, but that really should occur outside of this, so.
If this vote is no, not to go in closed session, and we decide to discuss the-
So, nobody has individual privilege. It's a collective privilege-
True.
On behalf of the entire body. So, you would have to vote to waive privilege altogether, which would be a terrible idea, but it is a possibility. So, you would have to waive privilege first in order to have conversations. But at that point, I, at that point, I would like to actually just have a sidebar conversation with our outside council as to what we can and cannot discuss, because while council may be waiving privilege, I don't know how that, it's affecting my duty to defend the city and to defend the mayor, and what conflicts are arising then.
Could CivMCC dump us then?
Um, I'm not sure what exit strategy CivMCC has. I'm sure that's probably something they could contemplate, but I don't, I don't know what, what provisions they have to be able to terminate the policy and remove us as a member.
Alright, thank you.
Alder Hutchinson?
So, this is an update. It's information we're going to get about this court case.
Correct.
And we're, as a body, looking at taking control of what's happening out here in terms of listening devices.
Yes.
I would think we'd be pretty nuts not to go and listen to what's happening and what the status is right now. I mean, especially if we're taking it upon ourselves to take that responsibility, that would almost be insane not to get that information. Okay, thank you.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Language has been read.
I'm fine with going into closed session for this. There are reasons for that, and I shouldn't limit it, and then come back out here and still discuss it, so.
Alright, the board is available. And this is to move into closed session for the litigation update. Alright. Folks understand.
Property owners. So, we haven't, we haven't changed our position on, on anything. It was the committee who decided to do this. We probably get 20 to 30 inquiries about similar types of issues with backyard drainage address relative to folks who have sump pumps that are discharging across the sidewalk, across the terrace, out into the, into the road, that they cut orders requiring that property be connected to Ministorm. So, with a nuisance situation like that, I could see that it is conceivable that somebody who's been ordered to hook up to Ministorm would similarly request that city pick those tabs up too. Offhand, I don't know. In the 15 years I've been here, it's well over 100 people that we've talked to with backyard drainage issues.
I guess, my thought is, I absolutely see the need to address some of these issues where the city does pay. And I am inclined to go with this agenda item and vote yea, but I don't want to do that if the common council doesn't want to do that. But I, I do believe that there are some things that are outside the realm of property owners that happen, and it's just one of those things, and I don't think necessarily the property owner should be held to task for that. But it would have to take, I guess, what I see as a vote for, a yea vote for this breaks that, that what typically is done, and there'll be probably more requests based on this in the future, and I'm kind of okay with that. That's my point, okay? But we got to do it with open eyes. I had to bring this up, because the person in my district is going to spend his money. I had to tell him about this item, and that we're going to vote on it tonight. I could go either way on this. But, but we got to be consistent, and I always tended to try to help people out if we can, if there's a reason. This looks like it's danger to the city, to public, if something isn't done. So, I guess, where do we stand on this policy? What do we want to do? I guess I'm sitting here, what do we want to do?
Alder Grant, and then Attorney Bungert.
I could be wrong on this, but I feel this is a little different. November is the first time this has happened, and a big thing that is different with this, I feel as well, is this is not rainwater or runoff. It is a constant flow. They estimate about 15 gallons per, and they are here, if you guys would like to speak to them, but it is a constant flow. It's running right now. It ran two months ago. It is not stopping, and it doesn't just come with rain, coming from the field. It is dry on the field. We've all gone out there, myself, Director Grenier, all property owners. It is dry on the other side, dry on their property, and wet on city land, and is flowing out to the road. And the fact that this just started happening in November, it's hard to say that this is a rain issue.
Attorney Bungert?
Yes, I did just want to point out, with respect to this policy or taking this type of action, this is outside of, outside of the claims process. So, essentially, we are preempting the claims process. Typically, if somebody is experiencing damage alleging negligence on the part of the city, or, you know, creating a public nuisance, and then they're damaged by the public nuisance, they would file a claim. The claims committee would investigate as to whether the city is at fault or has any liability, and then assess damages accordingly. So, this is kind of resolving the issue before it goes through the claims process, and before the claims committee has the opportunity to review all the evidence and make a determination as to liability. So, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay, thanks.
Do you, I guess, do, I can motion to open the floor if, oh?
Alder, Eric?
Okay, so, I did ask that at the committee meeting about it going to claims, and Attorney Co- Co- Kurt, I don't know why I always have a hard time with the last name, Cochart. Do you want to explain what your answer to that was? I think it would be helpful.
Sure. Attorney Cochart?
Sure, I think generally my explanation was this-
Sure, I think generally my explanation was the same as Joanne's. I believe Alder Grant brought this forward as a point that, to, for the committee to determine, and now for council to determine if the city is responsible. So as Joanne pointed, I'm sorry, as the city attorney pointed out, we are preemptively, hopefully resolving an issue for the property owners. And one clarification I wanted to make that's different from committee is that committee amended the original agenda item, and this drain, to approve the installation of a drain, is on city property, so not the private property, just for clarification, Alder Hutcherson, I know we were talking about private property, this was for the city's property, because in this case, the city is a neighbor here with a twenty-five foot parcel of property. But I think I did, Alderak, generally say the same thing, which is that this is trying to resolve an issue if the council determines it is the city's responsibility before we receive a claim. I did hear at the committee that the property owners have had a flooded basement, whatever, we didn't have that evidence to, they're not, weren't asking for financial damages at that point, which would have been a claim, and I think that's what I answered.
That's correct.
I think that's what I shared at committee.
Yes, thank you. So it was true that it's on the city's property, it sounds like a spring, it's not just a little amount of water, it is a, a lot of water coming, and it's causing a lot of services from the city to come out to deal with the ice on the other end. So it's like it starts on one end, goes to the other, so it starts on the city property, ends on the city property on the road. And my understanding is the, one of the, not necessarily plow driver, but the salt truck driver said he just had to put eight hundred dollars worth of salt on it because the ice was so thick. So I, I just wanted to share that, that was part of our reason.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary, then Alder Stoyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur, I think, you know, obviously every situation's different, and you have is, this one, being that it started on city property and flowed through private to city property, and was icing up and causing that, that danger, we really thought this is something we can act on. So, be glad to hear any other ones, but this one was really unique from what I've ever heard, so, thanks.
Alder Stoyer, then Alder Campbell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, we had a pretty long discussion, and the citizens are here too, we may, depending, open. I've seen a bunch of these happen over time, and I think what happens is in a case like this, it just seemed, you know, it was on city property, it came through their yard, through their, their area, it came to the street. Every situation is a little different, and I, I think the one worry that we do have is that we might be opening up Pandora's Box if we do this for them, you know, what about all these other folks? And I think in this case, it's kind of obvious, and I, I feel that I would, I would support us taking care of this issue. Thank you.
Alder Campbell, then Alder Galvin.
Yes, I would say, I think if we asked the owners here to come up and explain it, it looked rather painful, to be honest. I think they've went through quite a bit already. I don't think this is a huge amount of money, and I think I made the motion to bring it here. Like I said, it starts there, it looks like it could be taken care of. There are, Director Grenier also did say there were sewers both ways, down the right away, or whatever you want to call it, in the back of these. This is just adding one more. Maybe this problem didn't exist. What I found really odd is this isn't coming down the ledge, this isn't coming off the fields. They've tested the water, they've done everything, they're, they're strapped to, they can hardly get insurance, they can't get flood insurance, they can't sell the house, they can't, I mean, this, I think this is a cut and dry operation here, and I don't think it's a lot of money. I'd like to actually know the cost of all, all the city equipment that actually had to go out there to understand. They even had a breakdown of one of the machines once, so they even had to come out and fix it, so, I mean, it's cost us thousands of dollars already just to remove the ice and whatnot from the road. Sometimes they can't even get in and out of their driveway because it's, it's such an obstacle, let alone their driveway, let alone the street. So I just definitely think this is one that doesn't infer on other, I, it would be hard to find the same thing somewhere else that, exactly the situation, so. I'm in favor of passing this.
Alder Galvin.
Thank you. Maybe I missed it, but Director Grenier, has the city been able to determine why suddenly, twenty sixteen till just this past November, there's no problems, and suddenly water starts bubbling out of the ground? Has the city been able to determine if anything's been done in that area or around there to suddenly have this start happening?
We, we have not been able to determine what the source of the water is. I know there was a, there was a chemical sample taken, but that chemical sample simply determined that it wasn't city water. It didn't determine definitively what the source was. At this point, we were first notified of this issue late in November, early December, and with winter conditions, we've not had an opportunity to investigate what a potential source of that water could be. That, that's just not possible at this time of the year.
So if the city spends eleven thousand dollars and puts a storm sewer in, and it turns out the water is coming from some other source, and it just moves, and we end up with this problem again, I mean, won't we be better off determining where it's coming from before we start spending money and, and, you know, digging up the ground and all that kind of stuff?
That's, that's not my call.
Well, I, I understand it's not your call, but what best practices, what's, what's the best way to handle a problem like this?
Well, I think that's what Attorney Bunker was trying to get at, the typical process for something like this, somebody who's been aggrieved typically will go out, reconcile, remediate the issue, and then file a claim against the city. That's the typical process. Here, what is being asked is rather than have the property owner expend that money and then file a claim with the possibility that that claim could be denied, they're asking for the city to proactively go out and just manage the problem.
Because I, I have no problem if the city's responsible taking care of this. I'm just afraid that we're gonna spend eleven thousand dollars and find out that's not gonna solve the problem, or it diverts the water some other neighbor's house, and we end up doing this all over again. It just seems to make sense to me to determine where the water's coming from, so that when we do react, if it is our problem to solve, then we solve it. But we solve it in a way that it's not gonna reoccur, and I, I guess, I'm just kind of surprised we're gonna go and dig holes and put in storm sewers when we're not even sure where the water's coming from, and that it may end up coming up forty feet away somewhere else, or coming up in someone else's backyard later on. And that's why, you know, I'm just wondering if we're getting the cart in front of the horse here. Thank you.
Just on that real quick, Director Grenier, do you have any concerns that if the city does this work, the problem won't be solved?
Well, there are multiple issues going on out here. You've heard that the property owners had damage to the house, but the damage to the house was not from this location, not from this situation. That happened several years ago, and it was overland flow that came off of the farm field, the hundred and sixty-seven acres that overwhelmed the storm sewer. So there are certain things that we simply can't, with our current infrastructure, there are certain things that we cannot stop. So if we get a large, a large intensity, short duration storm, these gully washer type storms that we've been prone to getting lately, that runs off of that farm field and comes down to Spyglass Lane, Spyglass Drive again, that intersection's going to be overloaded because the storm sewer's gonna get inundated, and this won't solve that at all, this won't touch that. The hope is that the water that seems to be bubbling out of the ground, the hope is that this would handle that base flow.
Right.
Nothing more.
Okay, got it. Alderak.
I was just gonna make a motion to open the floor.
Motion to open the floor has been made by Alderak, seconded by Alder Grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poes nay. Eyes have it, floor's open.
Steve Lensinger, twenty-eight, twenty-eight Sussex Road.
Cheryl Lensinger, twenty-eight, twenty-eight Sussex Road. And I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. Warm spring, it appears to be coming from a particular part in the Green Bay parcel behind us, and it's flowing between our property and our neighbor's property, and it remains warm until it hits the road on the pavement, and then it freezes. And we estimated ten gallons a minute, which comes out to six hundred gallons an hour, which equates fourteen thousand four hundred gallons a day, which then equates five million and almost eight hundred thousand gallons a year. So to date, we've had almost two million gallons of water come through our property. Kosmoski was here last week with us, he can't speak because he's not here, but he said to us, I think it's probably more like fifteen. But we've not had an engineer come out and actually do a test, so we don't know, but we've actually taken a bucket under the grate, we've lifted it up and held it when the rain, I mean, I'm sorry, when there was no snow, no ice, and it filled very easily ten gallons. No, no question. So we reached out to our Realtor, we cannot sell our home because it's, it's, it can't be sold until, or put on the market until this is remedied and fixed. We also cannot insure our property because this is not, we don't live in a flood plain. And yes, we didn't reach out to the DPW until probably December because we didn't realize that this is not going to stop until several weeks after it started, and it wasn't raining any longer, it just continued to flow. So. Yeah. So on two twenty-seven, I called the DPW, I had gotten home. That's not, actually not the same day. I had called on two twenty-seven, I talked to the DPW Street Service and was told a hard no about any additional street services. Yeah, that was a Friday, we were supposed to have a holiday gathering that day, and we were gonna cancel it because we couldn't get in our driveway. And so I said, well, Josh Brassfield, he's your supervisor, he gave me this emergency number to use, in an emergency, my husband's out in the road, you can't get in the driveway, it's iced up, I could barely get in the driveway with my truck, you have a smaller car. And so he said, well, you're lucky Josh is here. Josh got on the phone, and we had services within fifteen to twenty minutes. And that same day is when the salt truck broke down, and he's the one who said, I'm putting eight hundred dollars worth of salt down today. We had a front end loader coming in that day as well, and I think there was another piece of equipment that particular day, and that's Well, that was, that, yeah, as of that day, that was a seventeen service request that we had made. But that is also the day on two twenty-seven where the salt truck broke down, and they had to have the repair truck come out. So that day alone, I can't even imagine how much that, just that day cost, not to mention eight hundred dollars of salt that day. And he said we do this every time we come out, eight hundred dollars of salt. Seventeen times eight hundred is, I'm not sure what, I don't have a calculator in front of me. But let's just, let's just hypothetically say it's three hundred dollars per trip, times seventeen trips is five thousand one hundred dollars since, since probably December, because in November, we didn't have it freezing, causing ice in the road to cause a problem for the safety for us and for the public. So. And I don't remember which Alder brought up the nuisance, but there are actually three codes that we could find that define a, a city nuisance, a public nuisance on what we are experiencing because of the city problem with the water. It's coming from city property, over our property, without our permission, it is negatively affecting our property, and going out into the street and freezing. There, we're a block and a half away from school, the kids walk to school, they want to come and they want to ice skate on the ice, they want to ride their bicycles on the ice, they want to take their scooters on the ice, and there's an ice rink just right behind the school, just right down the road, but they want to play in our ice. This is a busy street, in the middle of the street. It's terrifying. Every time we come home, what state is my house gonna be in today? I don't know. Can I get in the driveway? I don't know. I can't walk in to get to my house because all the ice has been shoved around my whole house, I've got this ice berm, I can't climb over it and safely get into my home. If you have a pool that's fifteen feet by thirty feet and six feet deep, it takes thirteen thousand five hundred gallons to fill that pool. Every day, we have fourteen thousand four hundred gallons coming across our yard. We can fill a, a swimming pool bigger than that, that six, I'm sorry, that fifteen by thirty-six foot deep pool every day. And that's okay? I don't think it is. If, if this were coming from my property, negatively affecting any of you, if you were my neighbor, I would have to fix it. I don't know why Green Bay's getting a pass. It doesn't make sense to me. We have thousands of pictures. We have a very nice video that we just took, it's about a minute and twenty seconds. If any of you want to watch it, we'll, we'll send it down the line.
All night now, let's just do it.
I've, we have hours and hours of video. What do you need? What can we show you to, to prove our point?
Are there any questions for, for, I guess? Alder Stoyer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lunsingers for coming in, and we'd listen to your committee as well. For the store. Are you, you know, maybe it's off the point, but if this is fixed, is this something that you would say, I'll stay in my house, or are you?
We moved here, we, we moved, we bought this house, it was brand new, it was, I'm not sure when it was built, we actually, we've been there six years this, in February last month, so six years and one month we've been here now.
So, so you said you would stay?
You have, you have five years to work to retirement, I have six. We don't want to stay in this situation if it's, but we can't sell it. I just, I'm terrified to come home every day. I don't feel comfortable in my home. What's gonna happen next? It's not fair.
Yeah, and we, we saw the pictures and that, so we appreciate your testimony, but thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from? Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poes nay. The ayes have it. Alder Brunet.
Director Grenier, if there is a, a field drain placed, it would be on city property. Is that correct?
If the city were to install something, yes. We can't do work on private property.
When would that take place? When would you begin? When it thaws?
If the council directs me to put it in, you tell me when to put it in. I mean, I can put it in in the winter, it's just gonna make a god awful mess.
Sure. I mean, I would argue that there is a mess that's occurring now, you know, with the
It's gonna, it's gonna be a substantially worse mess if we go in there before spring, but if you want it in, we'll put it in.
I, I, I get that. Thank you for that. No other questions? To me, it's just, I understand the concerns of the Alders, but, I mean, there are so many flooding issues and concerns we have in the city. It's no small consideration to spend, you know, a few thousand dollars to fix something that may not be the end goal or the end fix. I mean, maybe the water source is coming, maybe it's moving down, I don't know, but I just know that the number of flooding issues we have in the city, there's an ability to put on city property a field drain that will alleviate some of the very serious flooding concerns in that area that may be caused by a city property, we don't know, I don't know. Why would we just prolong this and then have a, if it is in fact caused by a city property, then open ourselves up to a claim that could cost much more the cost of putting in a simple field drain? I just, I don't know why we're going to this level when we have an obvious concern that could be alleviated by putting on, putting in a field drain on city property. I just say do it. I'm, I'm in favor of the motion. Thank you.
It's Alder. Alder Grant?
Question for Director Grenier, if you could recommend the best amount of negative effect with the yard, would you guess, like, April, May, is this something that possibly in the
If the council wants it in, and that's the direction we're given, we'll go out there and, I'll get it in.
Can, and I apologize, I know we just closed the floor, I just thought of this now, can we ask the residents if, yeah, I mean, it's gonna affect potentially their
I'm sorry, can you please ask it again?
Yes, just with being the property owners, they're potentially with construction, it could affect mess-wise slightly, their yard. Do you have a preference if they can do the least amount of damage in April, May, is that an issue?
It's not an issue. It's a, it's a mess now.
It's a disaster.
It's, it's getting worse.
You're okay waiting, or you would want them to break ground next week?
No.
Okay.
They can do it when it's
When it's safe, you know, when it's safe for everyone, but I do appreciate a timeline.
Okay.
Alder Johnson?
Are you, are you okay? Obviously contingent on the outcome of this vote here, but are you okay if we, rather than specifying a time, we just leave it up to you to work with public works on when the appropriate time is to do the work? Are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
I mean, that way we don't have to sit and belabor this point of when to do it. These folks can all figure it out. So, okay.
Great, thank you. Let's close the floor.
Second.
Floor made by Alder Stoyer, seconded by Alder Brunet. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. The eyes have it. Floor's closed. We have a motion. Are we ready to vote? Okay. More comments. Alder Campbell?
Slight comment. I know we just asked the, the people there in correspondence with Alder Grant so that we can make sure everything is communicated good. I think it would be a good idea. That's all.
Sounds good. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. That motion is, that item is approved. Thank you for sticking around so late. Onto protection and policy. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately?
Five and eight.
Five and eight?
Five and eight, yeah.
Any others? Five and eight will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. That report is approved, the exception of items five and eight. Who wishes on five?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Storier. Item was pulled by Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to read it as it's presented. "To refer to staff to form a plan to bring stakeholders together," so far so good, "on a process to move forward on the recommendations outlined in the Equal Rights Commission Housing Report." I'd make a motion to amend that, to take out recommendations and put issues. "To work together on a process to move forward on the issues outlined in the Equal Rights Commission Housing Report and to produce recommendations for the city."
Seconded, motion was made to amend by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion?
And, and the reason I'm doing that is I don't want to limit it just to their recommendations. There might be some other things out there that this group comes up with that we might want to embrace.
Sounds good. Alder Eck?
Um, yes, I just remember that it's recommended, so that's where I think I'd like to focus on that, where it's putting together, as they said, stakeholders and working on a housing task force. That was what we were talking about, right, at our last committee, at council meeting? And it just didn't seem like it was in there, so...
Yeah, well, I think the discussion at committee was slightly different than that, which is why the language is different.
Okay.
All in favor is amended, made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Grant?
Um, I just have a question for staff. I don't know who would like to answer it, Director Folds, but I know it kind of dawned on me after our meeting, you guys mentioned about the tenant and landlord training, that that's already in process. Can I just ask, where did that recommendation come from? Because I know that was a recommendation of the housing report, but we had received and placed it on file, so I'm curious as to how that was decided to move forward.
What I, what I can start, and then I can pass over to Director Cheryl Renier-Wig. There's been landlord-tenant training going on for, I think, a couple of years now. I think especially landlord training, and I think tenant training was maybe the first time offered last year. So then, I guess I'll turn it over to...
Decades, probably.
So we have our, the city offers our standard landlord training, but there's a subcommittee made up with the Brown County Housing Authority that is working on creating landlord and tenant training, putting that together, possibly certifying landlords that go through it, certifying tenants that go through it. So then there's some accountability, like, hey, I have a certificate, I went through this training both ways. There, that group has just started working on that process now, but that's through a different, it's the Brown County Housing Authority Housing Task Force that was set up as a result of some of the work that was done here, when we were passing the Equal Rights Ordinance, I think. So we've been working on some things to help people get some incentives to allow more landlords to use Section 8 program. They've been making some changes to that program, but this is the next thing that we'll be working on. So that's separate from this work. They're working on that.
Okay, perfect. I just saw some overlap there and I wanted to make sure that it was...
I sit on that committee, so I'll be sure not to...
Okay, thank you.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. That item has been approved as amended onto item eight. It's, it is an informational item. It was pulled by Alder Weary. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, I know it's informational, there's no action at this point. The, oh, I filled it in with a few other dates. The council was, we authorized, you know, city staff to move forward on June 18th, 2019, to move forward with a lawsuit. And a year later, on September 24th, 20, of 2020, the court ruled against that negotiation class. So from that point in September of 2020 until June of 2021, about eight, nine months, who dropped the ball and why? I mean, did you drop the ball, Mr. Mayor, or who dropped the ball?
What's, what's the question?
Really?
Yeah.
Who dropped the ball in that nine months of time when we found out we can't proceed with our lawsuit? We should join in the other existing one to the point where the state legislator cut everybody off. There was a nine months there where we did nothing. So I asked you if you dropped the ball.
No, Alder Weary.
All right.
Attorney coach...
That's easy enough to answer, see?
Yeah.
Hi, Alder Weary. I know that we talked about this and I drafted a memo for you, and I know that we had a conversation about your comment about someone dropping the ball. So Vanessa Chavez was the city attorney at the time, handled this matter. You are correct on part of that, that the city, the class was booted by the Sixth Circuit, that we couldn't proceed with the class. And then from that timeframe, from October through May, the city didn't file a lawsuit, but the one point of correction there is it would have filed an independent lawsuit at the city's expense, not joined a lawsuit, which I think we talked about when I, when I discussed this issue with you and we had some back and forth emails. So you are correct that there was an opportunity there to file a lawsuit and the city did not take that action. I think we talked about other litigation that was going on at the time, but also that that would have been at the city's expense. And in 19, I believe a correction there is that, from what I can see in the records, the city council chose not to move forward with an independent action because of cost and stayed in the class action. So in 19, that decision was made not to pursue, but as I said, you are correct that no action was taken. And then the legislature passed a law that created a retroactive statute of limitations where no other municipalities could file a lawsuit. And we, that, that legislation was passed in less than 30 days. Record speed at the state, intentionally meant to exclude anyone who hadn't filed an action.
All right, I appreciate it. I just want it to be known, the city council, through no fault of our own, you know, we didn't miss out on this. So we weren't advised till after. We were told it was too late. So it's unfortunate, I know that falls on, you know, too busy or what, I know, I know somebody was out on maternity leave, but this is a pretty big deal, so we missed it.
All right. Any other comments?
Shaking your head, but it's millions of dollars, Mr. Mayor, so...
I provided you is that the county is getting money and the state is getting money, and I, I think there, the door is open for us to ask to participate in those avenues. I think Commissioner Warwick could maybe comment on more of that, but in terms of what the county is doing with their funds and the state, there's absolutely an opportunity if we have a request for money, a project, to ask them for that money because the funds are being distributed.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Now on to Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any extensions? Names to be handled separately? Saying none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. We took care of Plan Commission. Finance Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? None. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. The report of the Finance Committee is approved. Person... Onto Personnel?
To approve.
Second. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? None. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. That report has been approved. Public Arts?
Approved.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Saying none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. The report has been approved. Sustainability?
Approved.
Second. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Storier. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. That report has been approved. Informational item, building report for February 2023 included in your packet. Onto Resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules for all except... Well, I'm sorry.
These are resolutions, not...
Yeah, not, not, I must, just, I don't...
For, for what purpose?
Because it has to be...
Oh, okay.
Ten?
Take, take them all up, but 10. Alder Scannell? Alder Scannell?
Resolution to accept 2020 sidewalks in...
Yeah, we gotta just have to make a change to it.
Okay, yes.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up all the resolutions with the exception of Resolution 10 with one roll call vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stevens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. The rules are suspended. Adopt.
Adopt.
Motion to adopt all those resolutions with the exception of 10, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary, and we will use the board.
You may vote.
Onto Resolution 10. Alder Hutchison.
There is a Scrivener's error on the resolution under item W-10. The resolution in your packet reads, quote, "an interest rate of 375 hundredths of a percent per annum," close quote. This should read "an interest, quote, "an interest rate of 290 hundredths of a percent per annum," close quote. So I make a motion to amend the resolution to correct the Scrivener's error from 3.75% to 2.9%. And you all had a hard copy of this when you came in. I think by law, you're supposed to have a hard copy if you're changing by addendum.
All right. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it.
Then I make a motion to adopt the resolution as amended, replacing the resolution provided in the packet with the resolution provided to you by the city clerk here tonight at the common council meeting.
Alder Hutchison makes that motion. It's seconded by Alder Scannell, and we will use the board. Ordinance is first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules for 1, 2, 7. So what is aye?
I think we, we want to do 1, 2, 3, 5.
Well, 1 and 2 would not...
No, you're right.
Yeah.
So actually, we're gonna, we're gonna hold over 1 and 2.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
I know, you asked...
So...
Was this what you asked about, or...
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to hold 1 and 2 until our next council meeting.
Alder Eck makes a motion to hold ordinances 1 and 2 to our next council meeting, seconded by Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up item 3 to your 5 with one roll call.
I think we, we need 4 separately, because that's a first and final.
We do, all right. Well, then, motion to approve 3.
Okay. Motion to approve, to advance, item 3 made by Alder Johnson. Is there a second for Alder Johnson's motion to advance? Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it. Item 4. So this is one where we are looking, I think, for a first and final Attorney Bungert.
Yes. Staff's recommendation is to adopt this for first and final reading so that it can be implemented, all the changes can be implemented in time for our renewal season for liquor licenses, which is coming up.
Should suspend the rules to do the first and final reading.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to do a first and final reading for adoption, that was seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The eyes have it.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens, and we will use the board.
Easy peasy. You may vote. Go ahead.